Well, I'll shoot an email over to Robert in one minute because I'm sending an email now. Or in, I'm sitting on one minute.
Okay, do you want to start the stream?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to screen.
Oh, no, if Augie doesn't know, who does? What about the record? No?
Recording, recording. Let me get Cliff a second.
I set it up.
I'm gonna wait a minute. Technical difficulties worked up. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Hi, Jason Pinto.
Hello.
We have, we have two employees on the call tonight. We have Mr. Pinto and Sandy DeRusa. So we're gonna handle their items first so they can get home to their families. Well, here we have Cliff. For the television audience, here's Cliff. If he can't fix it, nobody can, and we won't have a meeting.
That would be ironic if it were our very last Zoom meeting and we couldn't do it.
There was an elevator guy named Chris Hill, and he was the best elevator guy I ever met. And if I had a problem, Chris came, I would tell him, Bill, if Chris can't fix it, you just have to take the stairs. All right, we ready? Yep. Hey, good evening, and welcome to the Village of Maricopa Trustee's Work Session for March 14th, 2022. May I please have a motion to open this work session?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Next item is adoption of the agenda and your motion to adopt the agenda.
Where's Victor?
I don't know, wasn't my data watch.
Okay. Um. I just have a couple of questions. We keep adding, putting stuff on the work session and having it for the regular session. And that's really not what our policy is, so I think we need to be more mindful of that.
The role staff thing, so I'll talk to the staff about it.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Morgan Cordwell, please. Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? No. Okay. Will you get that off the screen? Got it. Okay, thank you. First item, when we were talking last week, Chief DeRusa had an item that we needed her input on at a regular meeting, not at a work, at a, not at an executive session. And that's the Public Safety Customer Service Tool. Hello, Chief, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you. This is item 1M. Chief, could you just give us an explanation of this item?
Yes, so I had sent an email previously with a little bit of a video and a brief description of what this is. So it's called Guardian Score. And what is the Customer Service Satisfaction Survey Tool specifically used for police officers? So the company equates it to something similar to Uber. So what would happen is if the officer interacts with a member of the community, he or she would give that person a business card which has a unique URL code that the person would then scan, and they would access a customer satisfaction survey. And what's also different with this company is they don't just ask, you know, was the officer nice? It talks about things like, were they transparent? Did they show good listening skills? Were you, did you feel that you were treated fairly? Were you treated professionally? So once that, they thought that tool, that survey, then it gets uploaded to a database. So we're able to gauge how our officers are interacting with the community and also how each individual officer is performing. So if we can identify that there's an issue with an officer, we can use that data and we can then address it with that officer. It also would go towards the evaluation process. So we could also retrieve that data and look at how many interactions they've had, and if they've been positive or negative. So what I'm posing is to enter into a pilot program with this company. It would be a three-month pilot. And if we like what the outcome is, like what the results are, then we can go into a further long-term, one-year agreement with them.
Sandy, a quick question. You have the interaction. You give the member of the public a card with a URL code or whatever it is. Then that person has to then log in? Or, or are they contacted? Does the officer give the, the contact information and, and somebody else contacts them?
Nope, so it's, they can access it either two ways. So if an officer were in, have an interaction with you, he or she would give you that business card. You can either use your phone and scan the URL code which would bring you to the survey, or you can just log into it yourself to the survey, and then you would put in that specific access code. And it's a one-time code, specific to that officer.
The question, let me just follow up. The question then is, how does the, the resident or the person that comes in contact with the police officer understand that this is confidential, that it doesn't have it, you know, that it doesn't go through the officer is what I'm trying to get to.
Right, I understand, so.
They feel comfortable enough to do, to use it is what I guess I'm getting.
Sure, so I would have to confirm just on the identification card. I'm just looking itself to see if it says that. But basically, what would be, like I said, I would have to just double-check the card. But I believe when it says on there, it's an anonymous survey, and again, it's a, it's a one-time code. So the officer would just say, you know, thank you very much, have a nice day, and please take my business card, which also includes an anonymous survey, and then that's how they would access it.
And would there be ability for the public to access this this survey online? I mean, rather than, okay, it's just via the card?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so they call in and it's a voice recording type thing, or does it go automatically into a database? I'm not quite sure how it gets transmitted.
Right, so what they would do is they, they would either fill it out on their phone, or they would log in at home to that website with the specific code that's on the card. They would, it's about eight questions that they would check off information. There is a space to put comments if they would like to. They hit send, and then it goes into a database that is held by this company, Guardian Score. And then only members of the police department can access it, again, as a, as a tool to evaluate officers and evaluate their interactions with the community.
So the, the officer, the officer is identified, but is the member, the public identified?
No.
Okay, I think it's important that we have a way of communicating that when the card is given. Because a lot of people may not feel, there are a lot of things that go on these days with, you know, surveys. They're not as anonymous as they might be suggested. And this sounds like it is really anonymous, but we need to communicate it in a way that is meaningful. And I don't, I don't know how to do that, but that's something that, I think the idea is great. You know, and the execution, you know, needs to be done in a way that people are protected.
Sure, and I understand that concern. And, you know, we can, once we announce it, we can put something out there that it is an anonymous survey. You know, we'll put it on the websites and introduce it that way.
But when, when the survey comes up, right, is it a, is it a QRC? QRC code, where those, but you, you, you take with your camera? Or you just put it?
Correct. Yep, so it's on the business card itself, so that little URL code is on the actual business card. And they would, they could either scan that from their phone, or again, they can just log in at home.
When, when you do that, right, you say you scan it from your phone. Could it then say, this is an anonymous service of people? More comfortable?
I can follow up with the company just to confirm that.
Just ask, yeah.
Sure, of course.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah. First, do you think that three months is enough of a trial? Is it enough time to get a sense?
So, you know, I think, since this is the first time that we're doing it, I, I don't have an issue with doing a pilot program just to see how the interactions work, what their data collection is like. This is, we would be the first agency in New York to use this company. And so I, I would feel comfortable conducting a pilot first, I think.
Yeah.
And then this way we can get any of the kinks. One thing that they were able to do upon my request is to also have a Spanish language survey as well. So they have now incorporated that, so now they'll have the option of whether they want to complete the survey in English or Spanish.
And then it's just one QR, it's the same QR code, it just generates a random survey?
That's correct, and it's only a one-time use code. So once someone accesses that code and uses it, it can never be used again.
So do the police get a whole bunch of different cards then?
So what'll happen is, right, so they will provide the agency with individual cards for each officer. And so, for example, if an officer gets 50 cards, each of those cards will have a unique identifier on that card.
And will they then be instructed that when you have an interaction with a member of the public, you're to hand them this card without the party instructions?
So that is correct. So one of the questions that I actually asked, well, how do you know that they're gonna give out the card? So, you know, part of it is if the engagement is through a traffic stop and the vehicle is, has, is equipped with the video and audio, we're able to capture that. Other than that, it's going to be just random kind of surveying to see that they've been given the card, whether it's asking them, or just doing follow-up. For example, if someone reports a crime and the detective is following up, the detective can then ask the person, by the way, when you met with this officer, did he give you a business card? So there are different ways to try to ascertain that the card was given to them.
Luke, Chief, you will know who the people answering the survey are, who, who they are, no?
No.
Do you have no idea? I mean, not to be, if our police officer, I might come to my friends and say, give me, give me a good Yelp review. I mean, how do you know it's, it's a real thing?
Right, I mean, listen, right, I mean, you hope that people don't do that, and you don't know, you know, 100%. But, you know, I would like to think, again, that they understand that this is part of a tool. And it's, it's, we do want to capture, you know, both negative and, and positive, and see how we can improve, you know, if we need to do that. So it is an honor system for the most part, and, you know, it's just a comment upon me to encourage the officers to make sure that they're doing that and doing it correctly.
And, and Chief, so a, a person fills out the questionnaire, and do you get a notice? Or superior gets a notice, or lieutenant?
Right, so what'll happen is, we don't get any notification. All the data is captured on their website, this particular company. And then certain administrative personnel, so myself, lieutenants, will have access to view this data. And again, part of the reason why we want to be able to use this data is to see, you know, have we had negative or positive interactions with the community? How is this officer behaving? Do we have any problem officers, things like that?
Okay.
And also, one of the, one of the things that also came up is, if you remember, as part of the Police Reform Reinvention Committee meetings, we did conduct a survey, and there was discussion about maintaining an online survey or something of that nature. So this would actually be in line with that recommendation.
Trustee Natchez?
Chief, I think this is great. Okay, a policeman stops somebody. There is a discussion or whatever. Is there a record of that, that the policeman, you know, has, when the ticket is not issued or summons is not issued?
Yes, so the couple of times that, so we would document any interaction. So if a, for a couple ways, if it's a traffic stop, yes. If a complainant calls headquarters and they want to report a crime, or they want to report something, it's documented. If an officer has an interaction with someone where they're obtaining any kind of information, then yes, that's captured.
Okay, because it would be interesting to have those numbers tallied, you know, per day, and the number of surveys that come back.
Sure, so that could be, you know, part of the pilot. And of course, there would be a little bit of a, a learning curve, I'm sure, with it, where officers sometimes might just forget that this is gonna be a new thing, where now they have to give out a business card. So, you know, there would be a little bit of, like I said, a learning curve with that, but, yeah. I think that the law should be on board.
Yeah, I think it's great, but I think the card has to have something that says this is anonymous. You know, and if it doesn't say that, then I think we're not really achieving what we need to achieve in terms of people being willing to.
Sure, what I can do is, it's, I don't know if I can actually try to access it while I'm here, but I can look at my prior emails from the company just to see, there is a copy of the card that's on it to see if it says anything on there about anonymous.
Anybody else on board of questions about this?
I just, Mike, what happens in terms of creating public records that are available under foil? Is that gonna be another series of documents that are gonna get foiled? Or is it because it's on another website, it's not actually a public document? I mean, that's a question maybe for the lawyers, not for the chief.
And, go ahead. Are the officers required to give these cards out, or is it? I mean, because if, if an officer has a bad interaction, I mean, he, he said, I'm not gonna give this guy a card, so he can go complain about me. I mean, how, how do you know that the information you're getting is accurate?
So again, so what we would have to do is have some kind of an audit process, you know, just to do random checks to see if it's been given. And if someone really has a negative interaction, a lot of times we'll know about it, whether the, the person comes in and complains. Or if we check a traffic stop, we see it's on video. So listen, I don't think, you know, anything's gonna be 100% perfect. But the, the companies that have used this tool have given it high praise already. It's being used a lot of places down in Virginia where this company started. So again, we would be the first ones in this area to utilize their services. So that's why I think even more so that this pilot program might be the best way to go.
So this is on, it's $3,500, I think, right? It's, it's on the agenda for the regular meeting. Is everybody okay with this being on the agenda for a regular meeting?
Yes.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thanks. No, what were you saying?
I, I am, I just wanted, I just wanna just understand whether it's gonna cause more staff work in terms of, of foil, fulfillment of foil requests.
We, we can.
Bob, do you have a opinion on that?
Well, of course. You know, it's, it's, it's a little bit complicated, given the new law, you know, that's about a year old regarding police disciplinary records. My, I suspect that these reviews, if you will, will be foil-able, but I'm not prepared to tell you for sure. I have to look at it a little more closely to be able to tell you for sure.
Victor, did you have your head up?
Just asking how, how we're gonna change this for the three-month adjustment of the, because I think the resolution has to be changed, correct? Or no?
The, the reason we voted for the three-month is because that's an appropriation that gets us the remainder of this fiscal year. Yeah, this is something we want to continue with. You know, we can budget for it, or we can, you know, come back to the board in Jan, as at a future time. We were just trying to get through this fiscal year with the requested transfer.
Okay, so the, there's no need to change anything on the resolution that's on for regular session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Good, thank you, Dan.
Sandy, while I have you here, just quickly on another subject, what's the status of body counts?
So we were awarded the grant, so we've gone through the process of accepting the grant, because you have to officially do that. And then what we start with, we have a meeting scheduled for next week with the persons who awarded us the grant, myself and, and Augie and a couple of members of my team. So the first step with that is reviewing the policy that we have proposed for the body camera, for the body worn cameras. Send it to the grantees or the granters to make sure it's in line with their parameters. And then we have to ensure that the PBA is on board with that policy. So that would be the next step. And then we can go through the process of getting the new quotes, because as you know, usually quotes only last for a certain amount of time. So we would just have to get additional quotes from the company. But really, the first step is reviewing the policy, making sure that the PBA is on board with the policy, and then submitting it for review.
So it's in the process?
Correct.
Thank you, Chief. So this will be on for the regular meeting. Have a good evening, Chief. Thank you for showing.
Thank you, and what I will do is I will email any additional information that I'm able to find right now, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Right, okay, the next up is Mr. Pinto. Jason is on for two items, paving of Harbor Island lots and roadways and the lights on lands and field. Okay, Jason, why don't you start the paving of the parking lots?
Good morning, good evening, Mayor, Board, thanks for having me.
So the folks who don't know, this is Jason Pinto. He's the head of the Recreation Department, doing an excellent job. I'm sorry, just.
Thank you, Mayor. So the paving of the parking lot, so as you know, if anyone's been down in Harbor Island Park recently, and I believe we attached a bunch of images to the agenda that illustrate the disarray of the paved driving areas of Harbor Island Park. So Jerry had our DPW, Assistant DWW foreman, go out and get a quote from Moreno for the price, which I believe is in your packet. You know, we get a lot of people that use the park, I mean, in, in a daily basis. We estimated, just quickly, based on activities and daily parking numbers and voting numbers, that over 100,000 patrons could visit Harbor Island Park on a yearly basis between all the activities we run. And that, and I think that's actually, probably is a little bit higher than that. You know, we bring in about 130 or so thousand dollars a year on the parking, daily parking and seasonal parking permit fees. So we do generate revenue from people parking in the park, but it, it's in pretty rough shape. I would hate to see someone trip in a pothole. Some of them look like they're bigger than potholes at this point, they're, they're pretty deep. So there's a lot of spider webbing and cracking. So DPW does the best they can do every year trying to fill them in, but at some point, it needs to be repaved, so.
And it's been 30 years since the parking lot has been paved. The last time it was paved was 1993. So it's almost 30 years that the parking lot has not been repaved.
So, question. The repaving is, is milling out the existing asphalt, and what about the bedding? Is anything being done on that?
On the what?
The bedding for the asphalt.
Yeah, so, so we're, we're doing, we're milling an inch and a half, and we're going two-inch overlay. What happens is, when you do the milling, you determine or you find out that there's might be some, some areas that need to be, have more attention as far as the bedding. So that, that doesn't, you call it the bedding, we call it the, the bottom course. And so we don't really know that until the time comes. But from what we see as far as the paving and the condition of the paving and the problems that we're having, it's not the undercourse or the base course, it's the top course that's causing us a problem. So by milling an overlay, we eliminate the problem of the spider webbing, the constant potholes, and the poor condition of the, poor condition of the, of the, of the actual parking lot itself. If you look at the pictures, you can see that everything is about two inches or so deep. And that's the extent of our, our repairs. And so what we're looking to do is mill the entire top course and then add two inches of new, new paving, which for all intents and purposes will last probably over 20 years.
What, one of the problems we have, and I'm glad that's being done, but I, I think, I don't know that there's an answer to this. We have a very high water table and tremendous, you know, freeze heaves because of that. And bringing all the snow down and putting there doesn't necessarily help us in the long term. So the question is, is there anything that we can do? I'm glad it's lasted 30 years, but I'm not sure. You know, I'm, I'm concerned about if there's something we should be doing that gives us, you know, a longer life, you know, whether that's been looked at, because that's a big issue.
I don't know if you can extend the paving longer than 30 years and continue to repair it the way we have. I think 30 years is the maximum you're going to get. You would see if there were issues with, what you see is the potholes filling up with water or the area that are spider webbed, filling up with water. The water gets underneath the, the top course, and then that's how it pops, and that's how the asphalt pops. You would see larger issues and problems if the base course wasn't appropriate. So I'm pretty comfortable that for a 30-year parking lot, it has withstood a significant amount. It just can't last longer than that.
And hopefully, after the New York Department of Transportation is done with their R95 work, we will get that area back by the highway where we used to dump the snow.
Yeah, we, we lost that, we lost that for a couple of years now already, so.
Yeah. Folks that don't know, the village was a, you know, we worked in tandem with the New York State Department of Transportation. They let us use that area right before 95 when you're going down Maric Avenue. And we would take the snow from Maric Avenue is where we removed the snow. And we would store big piles of it there. But now they're doing a project, I guess every 20, 25 years, they do a project, and they want their property back for a little while. But hopefully, we'll, we'll redeem that, because that was a very helpful to the community.
The one thing, Mayor, if I could, the one thing that we are saving is the fact that we're piggybacking off of a, a Village of Scarsdale contract. And we don't have to officially put it out to bid, we don't have to have, we basically had our, our employees do the takeoffs and then have a quote based on that piggyback contract in Scarsdale. So we save a significant amount of money by not hiring, you know, others that would charge us to do all of the takeoffs and the bid specs and all of that stuff. And that would be a significant, significant amount of money, because it's, it's over 400. Jason, what's the parking spaces? 400 and what?
It's, it's close to 500, like 488 spaces, counting the sewage treatment lot, yeah.
Yeah, almost 500 spaces, so.
Victor, how does that end up?
Well, I'm fully in support. But on that note, as Jerry was explaining, I think since the price tag is 492, 125, I think that, that is an up to that amount to be in the offer and the, in the resolved section. Because precisely that's a unit, so that we'd authorize this up to that, up to that amount.
And, and I want to point out that the area behind the sewer plant is not included because we have a commitment from the county to repave that entire area since they have been the primary users from the sewer project. So we save a little bit of money by, by having the county stick to their word regarding that. But thank you, that's a good idea, actually.
And re.
So we can change the resolution then, everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Repainting the, the lines in-house as well.
Yeah, we're repainting the lines in-house, yeah.
Yeah, Dan Natchez.
So I'm very much in favor of it, but was this on the capital project list?
It was on the paving project. It was part of the paving project that we were going to do for the village. But it wasn't specifically itemized as Harbor Island Park parking lot. And I think, I think, Jason, we, we run the turkey trot, do we run the turkey trot every year out of this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, from the, from the circle. So what's interesting about repaving this is that some areas of the park are not only vehicular traffic, but there are also pedestrian walkways, the circle, campers, there's crosswalks. So cars and people use a lot of these spaces.
Yeah, yeah, my, my big concern, my big concern is the people. So when, when a car going 5, 10, 12 miles per hour hits a two-inch pothole, it's not devastating to the, to the, you know, but it's, it's the, it's the running, it's the bicyclists, it's the little kids. It's that constant pedestrian traffic that's there.
It's not, it's a, it's not easy to learn how to ride your bike in the circle near the pavilion when we got potholes. And that's a popular spot for learning how to ride your bike in the summer, so, yeah.
All right.
I think it's great, I mean, I'm glad we're doing it. Before the pandemic, we talked about having kind of a list of, of, you know, when we did all that paving in 2019, we were gonna have a schedule and a list, and I know that's one of the things that we haven't done. we were going to have a schedule and a list, and I know that's one of the things that we haven't done. But maybe we need to try and get back to that.
So, so I'm ready for that. We already have the list of roadways and the condition that they're in. We're, so in the next few months, so the asphalt plants haven't opened up yet. We're trying to grab the first out of the gate so that we can get this done before, obviously Memorial Day. But the, the roadways will come to this meeting in the next three or four meetings.
Because we have a bunch, we have a lot of chips money to do this with, right?
Yeah, so the chips money will be for the road. This will have to be, you know, out of our anticipated revenue and, and our-
Can't use chips money for a parking lot.
No.
Use it for a roadway.
Let's move on. Everybody's over. I would have to send you the agenda, I said. Yes, okay. The next up, Jason, Lights on Lands and Field. And if you've been here a long time, you know Lights on Lands, that was, that was a big, big fight years ago.
Oh.
Go ahead.
So the, the lights, which were originally sold sometime in the 80s, have, have been the same light since original installation. The original light was 89. The original lifespan was 25 years, so we're well past that. I was born in 89, it's 32 years, so we're well past its original lifespan.
She's so young. It's not helping anybody. Go ahead, keep going.
So the main benefit, obviously, like any other lights we have, is in our home and on our streets, is, is converting to LED. You're going to reduce costs by, at minimum, 53%, could be as high as 80, depending on the dimness or the light level that we have them on. So that's one benefit, your reduction entry cost, you're saving the environment by taking CO2 off the road, the CO2 out of the environment. Reduction in maintenance costs, the big thing is Musco covers maintenance costs of these lights for 10 years, 100%. Right now, we try to get every two years, we're spending like $5,000 setting somebody up there, electrical contractor to change bulbs, because it's that old halogen and condensant bulb that takes a long time to warm up. And they do go out pretty frequently, and that's expensive to replace those. So we won't have to worry about any of that for 10 years, because Musco will take care of that. The lights themselves last incredibly longer than like a, a regular bulb, just like your house. So that's, that's a plus. They will be efficient and remote operation, which is key. So we can turn them on and off via schedule, via phones. So that will allow us to schedule youth programs without having to have an overtime person from the Parks Department there to turn the lights on and off. We'll be able to do it remotely, which is, which is, will open up a plethora of options for youth leagues in terms of affordability of using the fields. We're also going to put some security lighting below the lights that will be on when the lights aren't on, so that way we have some illumination in the park. The park can get dark at night, and there's a lot of people walking, especially in the winter when it gets dark at 5 o'clock at night. So those lower lights will be good to help illuminate the area, be a little bit more safe. The other one is the New York Power Authority, who, who we pay our, our electrical bills to, has minimum demand fees. So basically, the Power Authority charges us a percentage based on how much energy we use monthly that says we need to store up X amount of energy to, to, to save, to, to turn your lights on, because we use so much energy that they have to store it, and they call it a minimum demand, meaning they need X amount of demand to keep our lights on. So we're going to reduce those dramatically, because we're going to reduce our kilowatts, and that fee is based off the kilowatts we use on a monthly basis. So there is a return on investment, which was in the quote. The return is a 10-year utility, electrical savings of $129,000 and change, reduction of 289 tons of CO2. And based off just that, the system will pay itself within 19 years, and it's expected at a 30 or more year. I mean, this was at 32, so I would expect this one to go a little bit longer than our current system. So it's all good stuff. It's on a purchasing agreement through Sourcewell, so that satisfies the village's purchasing agreement. And the timeframe, it takes about six to eight weeks to order the material. We do have active season, so it would probably be in November of 2022, when, when the work would get done. And it takes, you know, a few weeks and we'll be ready to go. So with that, I thank you for, for hearing me out. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have one, I have one item, Jason, that you may have missed. I don't know. You were talking pretty fast, and you're very young, so I might have missed it. But the, but the, this was number one on, on, on your priority list. This was number one to be completed or asked to be completed in, in the year 21, 22. So this was, this is right on target for, for the capital project prioritization.
Yeah, we were, we worked on this pre-pandemic, then the pandemic kind of slowed capital spending down for obvious reasons. But it's important as a number one, because from an operational financial standpoint, we're just throwing money away by, by using old technology. So, so it's important.
In the overtime to turn on lights.
Overtime from, right, it's just, the, the, the sports leagues can't really, our youth can't really use it because it costs so much, and the village is not going to take a loss on turning the lights on and having an overtime employee. So, so it's going to be a benefit not only for just our regular leagues at night, but, but also the kids in the community.
Let's see, Lucas.
So thanks, Tom. This is, I'm the liaison to Wreckin Parks, and this has been on the agenda for more than three years. And I know the, the delay, the pre-pandemic delay was, was a real, an earnest attempt on the part of Jason and his staff and the grant writer to get some funding, working with Dan. And they just haven't been able to get grants for it. So, you know, I think it's something we probably should have done three years ago. There was, there was a hope that we get some grant money to offset it, but we haven't. And, you know, we would have been saving, we would have been seven years into the time savings. So I think it's something we absolutely should be doing.
Good.
Yeah, I can tell you from a youth sports perspective, 1977, I was 16 years old. I played my first baseball game under the lights in Park on 53rd Street and 11th Avenue, and I still get a chill thinking about it. It was so cool. So for, for kids who never played under lights, they're going to love it. Because it, it feels like you're at Yankee Stadium. You know, if you, if you close your eyes, really use your imagination.
Yeah, and the other thing to note is the, what they call light pollution is dramatically less. Right now, you get light that spills off onto the fan. You won't get that with this new system because it's so positioned that it'd be, it's, it's supposed to light what it's supposed to light, and that's it. So it's pretty amazing compared to now where you get a lot of light spilled off because the technology's just so old.
But right now, how it works is we have to have an employee go down there, push the switch up. The games all play, they play the games. He comes back, and he sits there all night. He comes back, he pulls the switch out, locks the switch off, he goes home.
Yeah, and, and, and they have to get there about 20 minutes early because they have to warm up. You got to turn them on, and they, yeah, they got to heat up and warm up and get ready to go.
They can grandma's TV. You don't remember TVs, because you were born in 89. You don't remember TVs with tubes. We had to sit there and actually wait to watch TV.
Yep.
And then, then we had to get up to change the channel, Jason. It was awful.
Oh, yeah, that's, I wouldn't watch.
Does anybody, I, I think that this is a great initiative. I'm in support of it. I'm, I'm glad that the rep committee thinks so, too. I'm fine with doing it. Anybody else?
Yeah. Yes.
I'm with Bing.
Okay, I got a thumbs up from the whole crew. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone. Have a good evening.
Bye, Jason.
Right. Do some good stuff tonight. Okay, let's go back to the agenda from the top. Enforcement of multiple dwelling law. Jerry, so you have a law first.
Well, this is something separate. At the last meeting, the board asked me to work with building department to try and establish a timeframe when we could provide an analysis, analysis for you on kind of the, the major differences between the exist, the building code and the multiple dwelling. Well, I spoke with Frank Tavolacci, the building inspector. He's a little tied up with the Pandora's box, which is 169 Mount Pleasant right now. And you've seen some of the emails, and you're aware of some of the issues. Our, our goal is to have this analysis done by mid to late April.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns?
Nope. Just for clarification, is this being enforced at the moment or is not being enforced?
It is being, I believe it is being enforced. I, one of the things that we have done recently is we have required developers for whom this would apply to provide a, a sheet or some sort of analysis on the, the codes and why it would be more stringent. When I spoke to Frank, he's still getting a little bit of a, a lack of compliance from the developers. But I told him, just get it done, and, you know, they need us more than, than we need them. And, you know, we can, if the applications are not submitted to his satisfaction, then they need to be submitted to his satisfaction.
Thank you, Dan.
Kind of like a zoning table that an architect has to apply.
That's my thought exactly, Nora.
I think that's a good idea. Even if it's funky.
Community refrigerator.
There's nothing new on it. I know people are talking, looking at different aspects of it. It's going to be sometime, I don't think we can remove it from the agenda until such time as there's something to come back to the board with, at which time we should put it back on old business.
Okay, you know what, I, I had a thought, just wanted to throw it out there, because it really is about placement now. A place that might be easily accessible to folks with food insecurity and centrally located and, but kind of added away, might be somewhere on Phillips Park Road. You know, the, the, the village has land back there. We have electricity there. I, I think that, that, you know, because it's all about placement now, right?
And manageable.
And manageable, right. So I, 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 I thought about it the other day when I was getting Indian food. And we have a park there that's very rarely used, and, you know, there's, there's electricity there from the streetlights. So that solves a problem. So I would ask everybody to take a look over there and give me your thoughts the next time we meet.
I, I, I think it's got to be managed well. It's got, there's a lot of potential for problems. I, I know that the Hunger Task Force is not interested in administering it. So the question is, who is going to run this? So i, i, if you have somebody, somebody's got to come to us and say, we want to run this. Otherwise, I, I don't think it's, I don't think I'm interested.
So, Tom?
Yeah.
So I spoke with Mr. Laberty today about another project. And he's the Mamaroneck High School teacher who does the original, he leads the original civics research group of students. And some students in his, in one of his, in one of the years, it's now, they've got, you know, four years worth of projects, had discussed it. There, there are a couple of groups thinking about food insecurity, and it might be something, a project that the students, a group of students might take, not right now, but in the future. So maybe not too distant future. So that's another group. So they would, you know, and then they have to figure out all of the community puzzling.
It, I mean, I, I, I'm glad we have kids to do it, but the thing about kids is they, they go to college. We, we saw that with the, with the scraps program.
So. Well, yeah, I, I mean, I would say the scraps program is a different kind of program. And this is, you know, the, the Orca program is like Girl Scout Gold Awards and Boy Scout Eagle Awards, where they have to create a project that is either completed or outlives them. The scraps project was just a, was a community service project that they, you know, that they decided to do, and it kept it going for a certain amount of time. So they would have to find a permanent partner. So it might, it just might, it, it might come to fruition that way, too. Don't rule them out.
Just to be fair, if, if you folks can, in your travels in the next couple of weeks, take a look at Phillips Park Road, let me know what you think.
I go there all the time because the Tompkins Avenue Bridge is out.
Oh, that's right, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Half the village is probably going past that, whatever it passed before.
That's unfortunate. You're right. Everyone has to-
So for those who don't know, Phillips Park Road is named after former Mayor Audie Phillips. Who was the first Democrat-
Jerry, since we've mentioned Tompkins Avenue Bridge, can you give us an update of where that is?
I know, we're still waiting for the report that we asked for from our bridge engineer, HVEA, to present to FEMA the comparison of the condition of the bridge in May of 2021, and then in September, end of September of 2021. So when I have that report, I'll share it.
And one of the other things FEMA asked us for was, in terms of it being a reimbursable project, was to prepare a scope of services and what would, what would be required to repair to the existing condition as opposed to upgrading it to complement the Army Corps project? Because, you know, we would like to be in a position that if we have to replace this bridge, it'd be done to maximizing the benefits of the Army Corps project as opposed to remaining in its current hydraulic and hydrologic configuration.
I think, I think the, the length of time that we wait for the bridge to be replaced, repaired, whatever it ends up being, is, is unfortunately extended by the fact that this is a, this is a structure that was damaged during a FEMA disaster event, a declared event. So there's extension in that, in that case in itself. So it's going to be a little while, unfortunately.
I'm just getting used to it.
It's going to be, it's going to be sometime, so.
Yeah, I make that turn all the time, forget.
I do, too. I mean, not when I'm leaving my house, but coming home, I just-
And just, you know, your, 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 your mind isn't there, and it's like, oh, darn, I got to go another circuitous route. Okay, American Rescue Plans Fund, I see the staff has pared this down. Jerry, you want to give us a little update?
Yeah, so Mr. Sonoff included the memo. Dan, if you can share that memo, if you have it available. Do you have it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll share my screen.
Yeah, so we refined and reduced the priorities. We focused more on the priorities that the board asked us to focus on. And we included a little bit more detail in the-
Do you see the, the memo, or is it?
Yeah, I see it, yeah, we see it. So we, we provided the board a link of the program, the Small Rental Development Initiative program that New York State has established, that we would mirror for our grant program. We would utilize some of the information that they asked for, as well as try to look at how their forms and how they approach the grant program and the requirements. The sewer rehabilitation project, obviously, everyone knows that we received a $4.95 million grant from the state, of which 1.62 million is on us as a village match. Therefore, if we utilize $500,000 of this sewer rehabilitation project, and then some or most of the next disbursement that comes in, in June or July of this year, we pretty much have our match addressed, and that's a significant offset to this project. So in, in reality, the project, or 5 million of the project, could be handled by ARPA money as well as state grant money. And then, of course, we have the river gauges in there for which we added the annual costs in our budget this year, as asked. But we're, we're including the river gauges in there. Dan, I think you spelled gauges wrong. I think there's no U in it. I'm not sure.
I, Bill Gates or whoever designed Microsoft Word with their dictionary.
So, so it really is, is a great discussion. We, we looked at a couple of innovative ideas. We've, we've asked the board, and the board's desire was to pare it down to three major initiatives. And that's, in my opinion, good work, and, and I appreciate it.
Rusty Nashis. Stop sharing the screen.
I'm very appreciative of the memo and what you've done. And I've been doing a lot of work on the different programs, but I, I have a fourth one that I would like to suggest. doing a lot of work on the different programs, but I, I have a fourth one that I would like to suggest, uh, adding. Um, the area from the Avalon to Fenimore Road, basically in most of the area does not have any drainage on the, on most of the roads. And this gets a real problem. Uh, it's a real problem in light, uh, rains and heavy rains. So I'd like to suggest taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, of this, um, uh, and putting it to a engineering, um, uh, study plan and drawings to implement, uh, a real drainage plan, which then complement the Army Corps plan.
From Avalon to Fenimore Road?
Avalon Road, yes.
Avalon Road into town.
Catch basin.
No, the, where I live and, and all the way through Washingtonville and then on the other side of the Shell Drake, I think that's what Dan's talking about.
He said it was Grand Street, right?
The, the, how could there be no drainage? There's, there's, there's definitely drainage.
There, there, there's, the only drainage seems to be at the intersections. The entire roads don't have drainage. Most of those roads are flat, did not have pitch. Um, some parts of, a couple of the roads have pitch for maybe, uh, a little bit, but not much. Um, not quite sure why, but it, uh, it's a, it's an issue that's been tossed around for some time. I spent a lot of time walking it. And really getting to a better feel of it. And I think that we have the ability of using, uh, this money, uh, you know, in a really long-term constructive approach.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't pay for any drainage. You just, you just talk about paying for a study.
Uh, more than a study and plans to implement.
As I said, it wouldn't pay for the actual cost of doing the work.
That is correct. You won't know that until you, you get through this.
Yeah, my, my, okay. Uh.
It's gotta be part of a larger.
Yeah, go ahead, Lou.
I, I, I think it's, that's gotta be, Dan, that's gotta be part of a larger, uh, approach there. I mean, uh, I, I, I live right there, so I know the situation you're talking about, but I don't know that, that trumps, uh, anything else that's in the, uh, in the flats or Washingtonville. I mean, uh, it, it would just be like singling that out because we, we just picked it at random.
I, 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 I would rather wait till we hire an engineer and have him give us an assessment of it, of, of, if this was a needed project other than facing it upon, you know, trustee taking a walk.
I mean, it, it is a problem area. I mean, he's, he's, he's right about that, but the, the whole, the whole, the whole thing's a problem and it's been for a long time. So, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, yeah.
Well, we've been, we've been, we've been at this, uh, offer funds now for months and months. Uh, I, I, I don't feel comfortable throwing something in here at the end.
May I? Yeah, I think, I think it actually ties into what I said, probably. I don't know how many times back, but probably the second time we discussed this, I think I missed the first discussion. So I, it was early January. So I think that the second session I did mention that, uh, this is a one in a lifetime opportunity to use funds to do things that will complement certain other projects. And if the number one priority for me at least is flooding, and in this particular area, this was one of those topics that I mentioned, but it never got kind of captured. This one and the study of the, of the aquifer of the, of the level there, those two are central to other pieces, for example, even the affordable housing developments. So I, I do think that if the number one priority is flooding in this village, and actually I, I've seen various emails now saying, what are the priorities? What are the priorities of the board? I can s- stick to that one. Number one, the flooding issue. And I do, so I think, uh, that maybe the price that should be at 150 for this and at least 150 to, for other additional studies on how to improve that area to make it more resilient for flooding. Maybe study some of the, of the impacts of the newer developments and getting up this area for, for revised updates, uh, in zoning. And so I, 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 I propose supporting what Dan, what Dan just suggested on doubling it up with additional, um, resources to do all those additional, all the, other studies. And I did say this at the second meeting, probably our second meeting in January.
I have, I have that in my notes too. And what I would add is there's a subsequent discussion about a moratorium, which is, you know, we're not, we are not efficient with moratoria, but about bu- building on the flood plan until we get some kind of regulations. Uh, you know, the regulations aren't going to help. We need to figure out how to alleviate some of, we can't prevent flooding, but we need to be able to figure out some way of alleviating it in addition to the Army Corps plan.
Okay. Just, just so you know, I, I have no problem with doing this, but just so you know, when there is flooding, it happens because the levels in the river are above the drainage area. So the drains, the storm drains don't have an opportunity to be outlets into the river because the hydraulic pressure is coming the other way.
Yeah, the, the.
So it, uh, putting, Victor, I'll get you in a second. Uh, putting in more storm drains is not going to change that problem because it doesn't change the hydraulic pressure. So while, you know, it, it sounds good, but the engineering doesn't work. Victor, go ahead. He has his hand up.
Yes, I, I, two, two quick things. I see, I see a, a hand up. And since you're mentioning a kind of expertise and, and who could know something about this, I think the head, the chair of the flood mitigation is asking, I would like really to hear his voice. I see his hand up. Uh, and he, he's, please, this is the second time he's the chair. He was there, uh, several years ago.
Has his hand up now. What do you, what do you want to say?
Mr. Gilbert, I, I'm suggesting Mr. Gilbert is giving an opportunity.
I'll get to him. Dan Sarnoff wanted to say something.
We'll have another payment coming in. You know, what we, what we've talked about and proposed is for the first payment. You know, the second, uh, round of funding is going to be coming in June or July. So I mean, I, I don't know if you want to, do you want to talk about that separately or do you want to change everything now?
No, there's, there's elections coming up.
Uh, this is a priority. Priority number one. So, so let's, yeah, this one, we mentioned it.
You got him?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for hearing me. So, Mayor, I agree with you that when those rivers rise, the local storm drains have no place for the water to go. Absolutely. If you walk on Mamaroneck Avenue, Mamaroneck Avenue has been paved so many times, it blocks all those flows from going into Columbus Park. So when we were on this flood committee, when I was on the flood committee in 2016, 17, one of the things I was saying, and it, it wasn't heard, was that if we could look at the levels, the, of these streets, almost like they were, you know, cur- curves on the map, what do you call those lines on the map? The contours, right? And then see, okay, because there are spots in that whole Washingtonville that, as you said, Mayor, when that river gets high, there's no place for that water to go. So I think spending some money to have an engineer see what we could do when those rivers are full would be well worth it because I think, and, and I wrote a paper that got published on this, you could possibly use the streets as overflows, right? That if you look at the street next to the railroad, um, on the, uh, next to the, the Sanoco Gaze Station there, right? That runs right into Columbus Park. That Shell Drake runs, pops over there. So I don't know if this, this is a solution, but I think if we could get an engineer to look at that area, I don't know if we have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I think it's well worth a look at it. And if you look, read those village emails from the people, our villagers, they're all complaining that they can't even walk in those areas because of, of the water. That's all I have to say on the issue.
Thank you. Thank you. I, 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 I know that we have both talked about the hydrostatic pressure before that. I appreciate you remembering that. Lou, you have your hand up?
Yeah, the, um, if we're going to put money somewhere, I would urge us to put it in the, uh, dormant river maintenance program, which, which is, uh, has thirty thousand dollars in it right now. And, uh, go through and make sure that that river is, uh, is not, uh, blocked with debris or, or, uh, or temporary dams or any of that. Uh, we haven't done it in several years and, uh, I don't think that helped us during Ida. I really don't. Um, and, and the other thing is that river gauges probably should be m- maintained out of that fund if we can revive it. I don't know why it went dormant, but, uh, it did a couple of years ago.
I, 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 so I, I, I.
It didn't go dormant. It just never got spent. It was reduced during the pandemic, but it was funded from 2011 through 2022, but apparently not fully expended.
It, I mean, it was.
Kind of what dormant means.
It, it was, it was just a, a line on a piece of paper. Nobody made it, I mean, if, if flooding is a priority, that's gotta happen. That's the last thing you've done. But that, that, I mean, I think we should, we should go back to it. It's a good time now.
So, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
While you're right on your hydraulic pressure, that we have problems of flooding when we don't have major floods in, in, uh, the, those areas that I have specified. Uh, and that in, with a proper drainage system, it would actually long-term preserve the roads and, um, uh, reduce the, what I'll call flooding in the minor storms as opposed to the major storms. And then Ida, uh, you know, I, Ida was a, a, you know, an episodic storm. And, uh, you know, that would not, this would not have solved it, but it would solve a lot of the other problems that we have in a lot of the other farm. I'm in favor of, uh.
It, it, it wouldn't have affected, it wouldn't have helped in the 2007 storm, I can tell you that, because I remember watching the water come out of this, come out of the storm drain.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, why don't we put, let, let me just finish. Why don't we put, it's my suggestion, we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a fund for engineering studies in the Washingtonville area to help flooding. Instead of us saying what the, what, you know, what the best, you know, study is, let's hire an engineer and ask him to say, you know, if, if, if we were going to spend money other than the Army Corps plan, how would it best be spent in Washingtonville? Instead of coming up with our own pet projects based upon, you know, no science, let, let's hire an engineer to do the science.
I think, oh, good, go ahead, Dan.
Um, that's what the proposal is, but it's not just Washingtonville. It's outside of Washingtonville, according to the maps.
Dan, your proposal is about a specific solution that has to do with storm drains. And Victor's proposal is about a hydrostatic study. My proposal is to, let's have somebody that knows what they're talking about. Tell us what is the best way to spend our money to help reduce flooding. Everybody has a theory. I have my own theories, but I, I don't share them because I, 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 I don't have that credential. You know, I do know something about hydrostatic pressure from elevators. Uh, but, you know, it, it's, it, it, I, I'm just saying, I have no problem spending money to help flooding, but I don't want us to be, you know, deciding which is the best study to do. I, I think that that is, you know, nothing but grandstanding and, you know, it's not gonna, it, it, we might spend money on, on something that, 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 that has no value, that has no, uh, intrinsic worth to, to stopping flooding. You know, I think, I think we should hire an engineer and say, listen, if we have extra money and we want to spend it to alleviate flooding in Washingtonville or in the surrounding area, what's the best course? Instead of coming up with a course on our own, basically walking down there or what somebody sent in an email, you know, it, 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 I, I just, this, this is the problem with flooding. Everybody has a theory. Everybody has their own, you know, point of view. And, and those point of views might be valid, but we don't know that until we've tested them.
I think Mr. Galver has, has his hand up again.
All right, Tony.
I think he never took it down. Okay.
So unmute yourself. Tony, do you want to talk again? You're all right, buddy.
Sorry. I think hiring an engineer to figure out how to alleviate the, kind of the street flooding in the flats, Washington area would be a very good idea because I don't think we know what the, what, what the options are and what the most cost effective options are. So I think I, and I, I, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but I will talk to them about it Tuesday. And, um, I would definitely support a study like that so we could figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Hey, can I, can I say two things?
Sure.
Washingtonville, you know, like, Dan can confirm, Dan, Dan Sarnoff is a, is just a small area on the map. It's really not the area we're talking about. It doesn't include the Avalon and it doesn't include the industrial area. And I think we might want to think about both sides of the river and the other side of White Plains Road as well. Not just the tiny area that's the historic Washingtonville.
Washingtonville includes the Avalon.
I think it includes a flat, so.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure the subdivision map does. I'm just, I just want to make sure.
That's what everybody, everybody knows that's.
We're all talking about it. Okay. Well, okay. The other question I have is about the, um, New York Home, New York State Home Program for Jerry. Um, so I, I understand how this works. Um, so we would be basically providing soft costs for affordable housing developers.
Would be.
And maybe they could leverage some of the county money for land acquisition. It could partner that way.
Right, but it would only be, the way I envisioned it, would only be 100% affordable housing developments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the county has, has a lot of money that doesn't typically get spent and they've put more in the budget this year for land acquisition. So you might be able to partner that way. And, um.
So that, that was a little, that was a little, that, that ended up, when I was sitting, when I was, um, um, at the county and, um, we were doing the, uh, we had that workshop with the state legislators. That was a little, uh, there was a little contention there on, uh, what they considered. Everybody was okay with spending or contributing money to 100% affordable housing. Not many legislators were, were content on, on giving, um, uh, money to developments that, that, that were not 100% affordable.
Okay. And that, well, and also if you can get to a hundred percent, you can get a lower degree of affordability.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, the other, the other thing I'd say is we made this mistake with the regatta. It's, um, 15 to 20 years. I think that's very out of date. I think that usually they want 50 or 99. So that, that, that the, that the affordability doesn't, um, what do you call it? Sunset in, in 20.
So it'd be our program, right? So we could, we could, we could easily do that.
Right. Well, I, and the question is, how much would it cost for us to supervise the program?
Uh, through our.
I mean, I don't.
Yeah, let's say we had one development, right? Or one, one entity, um, just like we continue to monitor the other units, you know that I get printouts of the other, uh, affordable unit, affordable complexes that, that include affordable units. I get printouts to, 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 uh, um, share with the building department regarding those affordable units.
I mean. In the village, just.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be marketing them. We would probably do it through, you know, Rose Noonan or through the, through the town of Mamaroneck. We wouldn't be marketing, but the question is how much would it cost to administer the grant program versus using an established program to do it in the village of Mamaroneck? Just because does it, is it another staff person? I'm just.
So, so once we give out the money, Laura, I didn't envision having more monitoring than we already do with the other affordable units, the other affordable, uh, complexes.
Okay.
Victor, Victor, Victor has his hand up.
Yeah, I have a question, I think, for Nora and also for Jerry, which is, uh, when I read that email, but saw that link, I had similar thoughts. Uh, this is getting us into a program that actually state, uh, but will require management. And also, uh, so, so
Uh, this is getting us into a program that actually state, uh, but will require management and also, uh, so, so. While I understand that that's the type of program that we're inclined to, I would, wouldn't like this memo for at least on my, on my side to say, I, I want to go just that route. I I think just keeping this amount dedicated to that, to this goal of affordable housing is okay. But I don't want to just to tie our hands to that scheme because precisely it would have, it could have some other consequences that I, I don't think we're at this time ready to evaluate. So I, I'm okay leaving the price that that the amount, but I I I think it's not an endorsement of exactly how to go. I think we need to study. This this further actually because there's several pieces to it. So so with that caveat, I I I will support it. But and then the question for Nora is, what I think, is there any additional clarifications that you would like to see in this memo so that we don't go? So that we go in the, in the right step by step analysis and not and not. Tired hands, which that was kind of my question to you. How can we make this better?
My sense from having worked on some affordable housing projects and um, been involved with the development of of the MAC Board, you know, been involved twenty or more than twenty years ago with the MAC Board. Is that we run the risk of getting into that kind of situation where we're a nonprofit that spends too much on administration and not as much on the mission. And we might be able to partner with somebody else who would do this better than we would because it's not a lot of money. And so maybe we should, you know, we're, we're committing to covering soft costs. And we can probably get the county to cover the land costs and that's going to be really attractive to an affordable housing developer. Maybe we're going to be able to find a nonprofit that does it better than, that does it better, that can work with us. And I'm happy to work with Jerry on that. I I don't know. I just, we might be able to do it in the most efficient way and get the most bang for the buck.
But why couldn't we have the town housing administrator?
Yeah, so so I envisioned it where we give them the money, uh, the, the people that we decide or the entity that we decide uh, has the best proposal. Uh, within the village because that eliminates all of that state, state competition within the village of Amerinac and. Give them, give them the money based on their costs. So we could have two entities. We could have one entity. We could create one grant of uh, of four hundred thousand. We can create two grants of two hundred thousand dollars each to to have two entities do it. But then once the development is completed, we just pass it on to the town and their uh, and their housing department.
So I I think it's important for the village to not have any involvement in the actual development because we've, we've, we have, we aren't skilled at that.
I think, I think we all agree on that.
Yeah. So this is a way, this is a way to incentivize developers to give us a one hundred percent affordable housing development.
Yeah, and and that.
At least consider the village to do that. Yeah.
That, yeah, with 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 the affordable developers, you get the housing in perpetuity, not for twenty years or whatever.
Well, no, well, that's, see this, yeah, I mean, but we have to make sure that that's, that, I mean, that is, that's the standard now. That wasn't the standard twenty-five years ago.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Now, I would like to propose taking a hundred and fifty thousand out of a sewer rehabilitation program and putting it into an engineering study. To evaluate. Projects in the Washingtonville area. Other than the Army Corps, that would help alleviate flooding for our residents.
You want to say Washingtonville and the flats in case there's any confusion?
No, no, no.
You shouldn't call the flats unless you've lived here about eighty years.
And the industrial area.
Why are we taking out, not adding?
Adding from what? Where are you gonna get the money from? Yeah, this is the whole amount of money. It's gotta come out of something.
Uh, our disbursement in June of last year was nine fifty or approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand.
So it's gotta come out of something.
And we have an additional coming up.
Ideas of what of that, I I think that the Flood Committee Chair was in support of that too.
I would, if I can, I I think that the the area needs to be, you know, wider than just saying Washingtonville. I think there are different people who have different opinions as to what that area is. That's why I specified from the Avalon over to Fenimore.
What about, what about the folks who live on Howard? What about the folks who live on Lester? What about the folks who live on Hillside? We we give him guts?
So. Can we just do a meets and bounds?
About from the Amerinac River. In from ninety-five, the Amerinac River uh, to Fenimore Road.
I covered.
From the railroad tracks north.
That's, that's fun. I'm happy with that. Um, I, I would rather not take it out of um. What we. From the, from, from the stormwater, um, the member, it's interesting, I'm talking to him. It's interesting that we have, the memo says three hundred thousand for the affordable housing and the caption on top says four hundred thousand. Um, and my feeling is that we can take a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand from there, still have meaningful effort to um, affordable housing.
No, I I I'm totally against that. Listen.
I I.
I I, this is a chance to really make a difference in people's lives. Uh, that sewer rehabilitation project, we could bond that and it won't cost the residents of this village a couple of coffee a year. I have, I have no interest in doing that if it's coming out of the Affordable Housing Fund. You know, this is about really having seed money to make people's lives better. The sewer, the sewer rehabilitation, that money can, that's a hundred and fifty that can be bonded of a project that we were, we were going to bond five million of. Now we're only gonna have to bond a hundred and fifty of. That that is like, you know, that 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 is not fair to people who really need it. Because we have people in this community who are still out of their homes from the floods. We have to offer them some hope.
I understand that, Tom.
Them and leaving money in the sewer rehabilitation program where that cost could be borne by everybody in this community. I I'm not for that. That that's, you know, hurting the people that need the most help. What then?
Then, how many units do you think you would get if a hundred percent affordable housing?
It it could, you could get a building if it's seed money and it, it covers the soft costs. It could be what makes the building viable or unviable. It's not about wanting two apartments, Dan. It it it's about possibly having a development. I I know you can't see that. But, and I know you, you don't really understand the viability of affordable housing in this community, but this is really important.
Tom, that's, that's not an appropriate thing.
Yeah, come on.
I just said whatever I want. If you don't like it.
Not respectful and it's not polite. Let's move.
Let's come on.
Forward. I think everybody.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we oppose that language here.
Listen, I'm opposed to this. This is a bad move for people in this community.
And and you can be chose, Tom.
Yeah.
Fine, we all, we all have our independent views.
Every.
And I know a great deal about affordable housing. I'm very much in for it, but I'm looking at the cost, but I'm looking at what I'm talking, Tom. I'm looking at the cost benefit, all the resident, how many residents you can get for uh, in affordable housing for that money? And how much you can do for that many more people? And I think.
What I'm trying to point out, Dan, I mean.
It would be nice if you just.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the.
Be nice if you just let some die. I I appreciate your views. I would like to finish mine. Thank you. So it, the, so the issue becomes, it's not saying one or the other, it's trying to do both. And that's what, you know, that's my proposal. Thank you.
Yeah, I I I take issue with your, your characterization. It's not trying to do both. It's taking money from the housing and use and 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 leaving the sewer rehabilitation project, which we had always, always. Talked about bonding. And, you know, you can have that smirk on your face all you want, Dan, but this is really important. Affordable housing changes.
Smile at you, Tom.
You know, you have a smirk on your face, Dan.
Sounds funny. I'm smiling.
Yeah, yeah, and and it's, it's a really important thing for people in this community, especially those that are still out of their homes. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars bonded to this community comes to about, you know, a quarter a house a year over the thirty years. You know, maybe that's important to you, but I think people in this community would rather see people in homes. So I make a motion that we take the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the engineer's study from the sewer rehabilitation program. So not, and 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 I have a second.
I ask, can I ask a question, which I think was part of it? The memo has two amounts. We have four hundred thousand for affordable housing and three hundred for affordable housing. I think that was the question.
Mr. Sarnoff corrected that. I'm sorry about that. Mr. Sarnoff corrected that and he was supposed to redistribute it, but I made him very busy today. But what he put on, what he put on the screen was the correct memo, the corrected memo.
It's four hundred.
Four hundred K.
Yeah, I'm working from the packet that I downloaded Friday, so that's.
Four hundred thousand.
So I'd like to make a.
Five hundred thousand for.
I said, no, Dan, I've already made a motion.
I'd like to amend your motion, which I can do.
No, it's been seconded. Whatever. It's been seconded.
It's been seconded, you can't.
It's been seconded and you can amend a motion. And and that's what I propose.
You can't, it's been seconded. Or we call the roll.
Have to vote on the motion.
Yes. Trustee Natas?
No.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I. Thank you. So the money for the study for Washingtonville will come out of uh, sewer rehabilitation. That'll go down to three fifty. And Washingtonville will walk for one fifty. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll revise. Mayor will revise the memo and redistribute it. Sorry about that.
It's not Washingtonville. It was the, the geographic area you described.
Yeah, geographic area from, from the Amerinac River, north of the train tracks. Uh, east to Fenimore Road.
I'm, do you think it should go a little bit further east than Fenimore Road?
Where do you want to go?
Well, I I mean, I don't know if the industrial area, I mean, they're what, it, it's sort of. I think maybe that's subject for discussion.
All right, well, let's ask the engineer.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, I I think that those are the areas and not, I guess it would. Be on the. North side of Amerinac Avenue. Now, what about the south side of Amerinac Avenue?
No, it doesn't really flood as badly over there. We, the south side of Amerinac Avenue brings you all the way to Boston Post Road.
Yeah.
Let's, let's.
No, 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 no. I mean, I mean, I mean, the part that's county owned, like Columbus Park.
They don't own Columbus Park.
No, I mean, the part of Amerinac Avenue that, the south side of the, of the land. The south side of Amerinac, of the county owned portion of Amerinac Avenue. So Columbus Park through where Lou lives.
I live right at the park.
But no, if you go from the Amerinac River. Right, if you go from the Amerinac River east, you get all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're covering all of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I said the Amerinac River.
Good, I'll do it. The, the question was whether Fenimore was far enough.
Yeah, that is a question. And I think that's, I think that's, we leave that up to the engineer's discretion.
Okay, so let's try and move on. Rental registration program?
Uh, Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, I provided a draft for um, Village Attorney and the Deputy Village Attorney. Um, they had other priorities, so at some point they'll get their rental registration um, draft together and then give it to us. I'm not sure if they have an update.
Yeah, hopefully in a couple of weeks we'll have that for you.
Thanks, Mr. Spalzino.
When I, can I ask a question about that?
What?
We have chapter one twenty-six and chapter one twenty-six, oh, I started to go through this and I didn't finish it all. Chapter one twenty-six makes some references to home inspections. Um, there's a phrase about um, public meeting space, which has, which is for more than twenty-five people or more. I guess that could be a common room in a, in an apartment building. Does one twenty-six cover any of this? That might be, that was a, something we discussed about a month ago and we didn't follow up on it.
Actually, I wrote, I had sent a memo to Bob with the actual language asking for, you know, a reaction to that. Yeah, I, you know, a preliminary look is that it covers some, but not all.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a, if what you want is the proposal that Jerry has made, there's gonna be some craftsmanship putting it into chapter one twenty-six, but that's what we do.
Okay. As, as much fun as the tree law?
No, nothing will ever be as much fun.
Nothing. That's, that's, that's famous. That's famous, that law.
Okay.
Uh, okay, thank you. Zoning strategies to encourage and support affordable. Do we have anything on that, Jerry?
Uh, Mayor, at the board's um, suggestion, we did get a proposal from um. Um, Parsley and Hanover, which is the new um. The new entity that Mr. Neil Desai works for, and that's included, I believe that's included in the packet if I flip through and find it.
But it's only a proposal for, uh, it doesn't have any details. It just has a, has a fee. And uh, so I, we know, we know Neil and he gave us some very good help with our comp unfinished. Comp plan, unfortunately.
Yeah.
We should be talking about that before moving into many other things, but anyway, uh, so I, 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 I think it should be discussed further. To to consider what the scope is. Otherwise we'll be running in circles here and and without a specific scope. Uh, I don't, I don't see where we're heading. So let's have a full proposal in front of us.
So.
I, I agree.
Let's delay that.
I, I, I agree we should delay it and come up with a scope, but I think we should come up with a scope.
Yeah.
We should tell them what we're looking for here.
I, can I?
Sorry, go ahead.
Nora was talking. Go ahead, Nora.
Wait, so Neil and Sarah Brown from Hardesty and Hanover are on the call. Um, I really, I'm with Victor. We haven't completed our comp plan and the comp plan should be what um. Guides our proposal for this. And um, so I think I'm really interested in working with Neil to complete our comp plan. I mean, that's, that's, that's. That's woefully late.
Okay, we, we could do both.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, when we complete the comp plan, we're gonna have a sustainability chapter. That's when we can work out the parameters of what, of how we want to change things for affordable housing. And that would, I think that would kind of back us into a scope of what our next steps are. Or it might actually accomplish the same thing. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure Neil would like us to finish the comp plan.
I, I, right, Neil, could you come on for a second? I want to ask you a question. Well, you can you. Give us a say at the floor.
He's on, he's on, Mayor.
Hi Neil, how are you?
Good. Hello, everybody.
Hello, Neil. Neil, could, could we work in simultaneous tracks, both on the comp plan and on this?
Um, that's a possibility, surely. I think um, uh, you know, the, I hadn't known what the, what, what the board is interested in with the comp plan. So that's good to know that you want to move that ahead. And there's also Sarah Brown, if you, if you're able to bring her on at the same time. If not, that's fine, but um.
I'm here, Neil.
Oh, hey, Sarah, hi, Sarah.
Hi.
Uh, so I think uh, originally just in talking with Dan and Jerry, uh, it was about affordable housing zoning overlay. And, you know, I know that, you know, the comprehensive plan got initially uh, put on hold because of the moratorium study. And there were a lot of, you know, decisions made about the, the C-one and C-two zone of the corridors in Amerinac and rezoning adopted. So the question is, um, I guess a question, and it's for myself and for everybody is, um, if you want to move it. I I believe the public engagement from the comprehensive plan is, you know, two or three years old. Uh, not saying that things haven't changed, maybe priorities has shifted a little bit. I would say that that's something we need to rethink, uh, how to, how to uh, how to kind of re reconnect with people. Um, we do, we do have a final, the third final draft of the conference and plan. We went very far with it. Um, is there, is there a way to uh, appropriately just kind of fix it up? Or do we have to do a lot of updating of the, of that draft? And then the second thing is whether, uh, like the more, in terms, moratorium study, went ahead and made, did the study and did some, you know, major zoning changes. Uh, as far as the, if, if the specific idea of an affordable housing overlay um, is something you want to uh, create. As far as the, if, if the specific idea of an affordable housing overlay is something you want to create and apply, is that something that needs to, you know, be put on hold in order for the comprehensive plan to be done? Can they boot, can they be done in a simultaneous track? And this is something I can kind of also ask, you know, talk with Sarah about as well. So that those are some things that come to mind.
Okay. I mean, I, I would think just what you're saying is maybe we should continue to comprehensive plan and include the idea for affordable housing overlay simultaneously.
That's one possibility.
How far are we along in the comprehensive plan? I mean, just, you know, percentage on it.
We had three, we had, we were, I'd say, we had three final drafts that we produced. So there were, the third iteration was completed after the BOT gave us changes and we completed a draft. So we, we just about completed it, and then the next step was to have the review process happen, just the last review and, and, and public hearing. So we got very far. So I'm just saying, you know, you, you, you could do, you could tie that up if that's possible, looking back at, looking back at the document, if that's possible to tie it up. Or, you know, you could, you could choose to move ahead if, if you think it's, if there's appropriate basis in the, in the existing comp plan, which, which from two thousand twelve, to move ahead with the affordable housing overlay. That's, that's another path they could take, is to move that ahead.
Trustee Sephor?
Neil, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that because precisely one of the issues we included as we were making probably the second or third iteration was this issue of affordable housing.
Yeah.
And after that, we've, we've gone a little fur, further on. But at this point, if we just, you know, we wrapped it up, improved, prove it without going into details of, of, of how the zoning change would be, because actually the comp plan supports any zoning changes in the future. We could probably fill that in. But actually, the question I think should go flip back to you, as you experience with us, are the good and bad things of this process. How could we really finish it off? Because opening this up, we should really come up with a plan and a timeline that, that includes this affordable housing piece, but get us to the finish line in a couple of, in a few months. It could be doable. Of course, it has to have some meaningful public participation. But how, then what would be the answer to accomplish all that? Maybe you don't have it all now, but probably you can come back and tell us.
Yeah, I think, yeah, our, our, I guess I would call more, our proposal really was, it was a proposal, just, this is what our, this is what the, what we thought, what, what, the initial assignment given to us, which was to go for the specific idea of a zoning overlay, is provide a rates. I think, yeah, I think we can go back and Sarah and I think about how can we, what's the kind of inefficient and, and appropriate way to tie up, to tie up as in, you know, finish up the comprehensive plan and move ahead with this idea for a affordable housing zoning overlay. I can, I think that, that could be something that Sarah and I put our heads together to come up with a process for that proposed timeline, so more of a proper proposal.
Why don't you give us a proposal for that, and we can evaluate that for our next meeting?
Okay. And, and before he does, Mayor, if I could, before he does that, because that's exactly what we talked about, there are other strategies that have been mentioned or recommended to us, like accessory dwellings, like, you know, parking requirement strategies, private-public partnerships, those kinds of things. I don't know if the board is interested in pursuing that or not. I thought the overlay would have been the easiest and the best overall big picture to be able to show the Board of Trustees, you know, what can go or what can happen where as the, as the, as the board pursues, you know, the affordable housing components that they want to, or strategies that they want to achieve. So.
I don't know about the rest of what, you know, for accessory dwelling units in my mind, they, they, they're only meaningful to me if they're actual affordable, you know.
Yeah, you said that.
I don't like the idea of, oh, well, they'll probably be affordable, they're small units, you know, because I, I don't see that's the way that they're going to evolve. I think they're going to evolve into just market rate apartments, and market rates apartments around here are incredibly expensive. I, I was, I was looking for somebody recently, and a decent one-bedroom is, you know, well over two thousand dollars.
Yeah. The same would go for duplexes and triplexes as well. It would all go to market.
Serge, I just want to see if Sarah, if we could, we can certainly put our heads together after we talked, is, did I, do, I mean, based on your experience, do you have any, any, any thoughts right now? Or can we come back with them on the proposal?
No, I think that's something that we can definitely come back with. But since you are so close to the finish line with your comp plan, I think we can do this hand in hand and wrap that up for you and make sure that it has the instruments that we need in it to then further your affordable housing law that you look at, whatever form that that may take. But I think it's an important issue that you're looking at, and I think it's something that we can definitely do and wrap this up.
I'd like not to forget the New York State or the Westchester County model law. I mean, I think I'd like, you know, that, that's something that we've talked about, and we've only implemented modestly. One and.
Yeah, I think again, we, we already had this conversation and it got into paper. So I think let's, let's, let's follow from there, maybe clean it up and, and see. But before anything, let's see the proposal. Really, we're getting to the, to the finish line. So hopefully Sarah and Neil can give us a very focused finish line approach.
Okay, great. So at least you have some, some guidance there, Neil. Thank you, Neil, for showing up tonight.
Thanks, Sarah.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you.
As a, as a matter of housekeeping on this, Jerry, do we have any problem in contractual arrangements with NV5 that in switching? For, on the comp?
I don't know. I have to look. Not that I'm aware of, but I will make sure that Mark G. and I take a look at that and make sure.
I just, I just don't want to get into a catch-22.
Yeah.
Engines.
That's a good point. Am I, am I still on? That's a good, that's a good point, Trustee Natchez. I think before I left, I, this is just coming from, from me. I had spoken with NV5 because NV5's planning staff has basically left the New York City office, so there's nobody left in the office to do that. So before I, I was still on NV5 part-time for, for a while until just before December, where I started at Hardesty Hanover, December twenty twenty-one. And I did send over, I did get, send over the final invoice for the comprehensive plan. Essentially, NV5 had completed its scope of work, you know, having produced the final draft, except for obviously the, the, the public hearing planning board the last little bit. And so in the interest of closing out NV5's role and making a clean transition to wherever I would be, which now is Hardesty Hanover, the, a, a, a final invoice was submitted from NV5. So that's at least the status from the kind of mechanics from the administrative perspective from NV5's side. But I, I obviously, I encourage you to follow up with NV5 too, because to confirm that, this is just, but that's, that's, that's how I dealt with it, because I wanted to be a clean, a clean break.
And we, and we own a work product.
Yep.
Right.
Okay. We have an executive session, so let's go through the stuff that's on for regularly. Item two L, I'm sorry, item one L. Zencity, connecting local residents to local governments.
This is on. Question, why is this on for regular meeting if it has not cleared the work session? That's, that's not the way we.
Well, we, we, well, because we dealt with it at the last meeting and the board needed more information.
Right, but it's not, it's not our procedures.
Nora brought that up at the beginning of the meeting when you weren't there yet.
It's not our procedures. It's not good.
Yeah, well, we, we, it's here. We, we're not going to do it in the future. We talked about it. You would, you would have heard it.
We'll, we'll remove it when we get to the regular session, if needed.
No, Victor, we won't. We'll talk about it and we'll decide what we're going to do. Does the board have a desire to deal with this at the, the, the regular meeting? Do you have any questions for the staff?
No, I, I think I would say no.
You, you.
I have many questions, but with what I have in front of me, I say no.
Okay, you say no. All right, fine. I can tell you.
I, I'm also, I, I don't see the benefit in this. I, I, I understand, I, we haven't heard from the lawyers about whether we're creating more documents that are, that are public documents. But from my perspective, there's a small amount of people that participate in meetings. There's a, there's another percentage of people that participate in social media. There are a lot of people who watch social media but don't make comments. I don't think this is, this captures everybody but the, the ten people who appear at public meetings. And I, I, I just, I, I, the report that they sent, I mean, I know it wasn't our community, but it seemed to be not that beneficial and not a great use of resources. And I really, you know, I, I know that everybody says we're flesh with cash, but that doesn't mean we should be spendthrifts. And I just don't see this as a really good use of our resources.
Okay, I, I just want to point out, there was something that happened on social media this week, that Nora, you, you actually became involved. There was a resident who contacted me about programs for younger children, children under five. And I put her in touch with the rec department and, you know, which put her in touch with Jason Pinto. And it all came from her tagging me on social media. I know majority of the board does not participate in an active way on social media. I, I really don't know, you know, a better tool to put your finger on the pulse of what's going on in the community. Yeah, obviously, not everybody is on it, but, but there is, I would say at least a plurality of people who are on one form of social media or another. And you, you can get a gauge on what is important to those folks, about how they're thinking, about how they're feeling. And I, I think it's, it's a useful tool that allows you to be a better elected official and allows our staff to offer better programs to the community. But that's just my opinion. Luke?
Well, I agree totally, because that's the only way to correct misinformation and, and rumors. And from knocking on doors and talking to people, I can tell you, there's a lot of that. And, and we haven't, we haven't communicated well in the past, and we need to start doing better. So if not this, then what? Because what we do doesn't work. That's my question.
You know, I think it's, you're getting, you're, you know, you're getting a small percentage of people who are vocal on social media. The, the, the point that Tom made is somebody who had already been to the, a park and recs commission meeting and had been in touch. So she figured out, she'd figured out what to do and she'd been in touch. So I think that it's, and sometimes it can be an echo chamber. It's a small percentage of people who are making comments on social media. This isn't getting to the entire population of twenty thousand. And it's, again, it's, it's, it's the squeaky wheel. There's, there's enough information on social media. There's enough people who follow social media well enough to understand what the trends are. I don't see why we're paying someone to cull through comments on social media, which may or may not really be from residents in the Village of Mamaroneck. So that's.
Do it, why not do a test, a, a three-month test, like we do with the other thing? See how it works?
And when we, and then when we get the report, we just release it to the public. I mean, I, I just don't, I, I don't, you know, I think the, the police chief has come up with something that's really going to fulfill a goal of the PRC and make us compliant with getting public input for the police to, to help the police, police even better than they do. I just don't see this as something that's, that we, we just don't agree. That's, that's my opinion. I don't see it as a good use of resources.
Let's just get this done. Trustee Natchez, what do you want?
Um, I happen to agree with Victor and Nora on this one. I, I think that it's an interesting avenue, but I don't see the benefits of really getting real input from the entire community.
I, I, I see what I'm going for, but I, I will tell you, folks, that this is like ten years behind the times. All businesses, most governments are, are using some sort of mining of so, of social media to inform their decisions. And I, I think it's a shame, you know, I'm on Facebook, but there's so many other social medias that I do not participate in that, you know, a, a lot of, especially the people in this community who are under fifty participate in and use constantly. And I, I think that, yes, it doesn't include everybody, but what does include everybody? There's nothing that includes everybody. Right now, we have a small group of people. And we have a very vocal small group of people. I would like to enlarge that to include more people, but I'm not going to, you know, eat a dead horse here. You don't want to do it, you don't want to do it. Do it next year. Paving for parking, police chief, we did. Okay, Westchester Joint Water Works Joint Capital Program, Revoa, Lane Waterman. There was a broken transite pipe. For those who don't know, a transite pipe is an asbestos pipe. When you have a break in an asbestos pipe, the Department of Health requires us to remove the whole length of the pipe and not just fix the break as you would with a, an iron pipe. This break is in Rye. It's in Rye, the area of Rye that is serviced by the Westchester Joint Water Works. There's, there's a portion of Rye that is serviced by a Westchester Joint Water Works. So this is a joint project paid for by all three communities. But we are the only community besides Rye whose residents are affected. We have, we have about, I don't know, ten houses who are affected by this, and they are now on temporary work. Rye has a lot more, obviously. So what this is doing is just accepting this as a joint project. So it, it's paid for by all three communities via the rate payers in Rye. Does everybody understand it?
Yes.
Are you fine with that?
Um, I just want to make sure that the, all associated costs with doing this, the bond, the bond counsel attorneys, what, anything that's involved in doing this is put, is captured in this.
Mm-hmm.
And paid for by, you know, them. It, you know, I read, I read the memo back from Bristol, and it wasn't as clear as I would have liked it to say that all the costs are, are included.
Uh, that's fun for regular meeting.
And can I just make a pitch? We talked about this before the pandemic, but, but obviously, you know, everybody's plate was overfull. That these repairs are super duper expensive, and we know we're going to have to do them. So it might be great if we could do them in a systematic way, not as emergency repairs, but as repairs ahead of time.
Well, the, the Department of Health and Westchester Joint Water Works have come to a deal that they would do them as soon as they break, and that, because the Department of Health could require us to do them all at one time. And this was kind of the deal that they made. So you could, you could schedule to do one and then have two more break, and you'd still have to do this emergency repair.
Yeah, but it's, at, at some point, we would get ahead of it. So, and it probably in the long run is less expensive to do them proactively. Now, of course, you can't predict which is the one that's going to break.
Exactly, that's my point.
Five, right, but I'm just saying, it's, we talked about it more than two years ago, and maybe it's time to revisit.
Thank you. The next up is poet laureate, Village of Mamaroneck. The Arts Council is recommending a man named Michael Collins.
Yes.
To be the poet laureate of our community. He's actually written poetry based upon his experiences of going to Harbor Island Park, which I found very interesting when I was looking at his, his writings online. Does anybody have any problems with doing this?
Not, not me.
Okay. And the last up was retention of firm for village search. I know there's a majority of the board wants to do this. I'll talk about it during a regular meeting. I'm obviously opposed to it. But I'm assuming there are three members who want to do it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's on for a regular meeting. Okay. Get to our packet four.
What happened to IJ and K on August?
We're gonna get to them next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Twenty-eight.
Weeks.
March twenty.
They're gonna be up next first. Make sure IJ and K are first. All right. I am making a motion. And the motion is boards and committee appointments. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered into executive session pursuant to 105-1F of New York State Public Officers Law. And it's, it's appointing folks to water traffic commissioners, parks and recreation committee, and a tree committee. We're just gonna talk about them and then we're gonna talk about, and then we'll point them into regular meeting. The next up is village manager EEOC complaint against the board of trustees. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered to go into executive session pursuant to 105-1D of the New York State Public Officers Law. And the next up is, is a litigation, the Village of Mamaronek versus CED. I don't have, is that 105-1D too? Okay, we're going to, that's a litigation that we're going to discuss in executive session. So I make those motions. Can I please have a second for those motions?
Second.
I plan to attend on B by advice of council.
Mr. Natchez, I'm gonna try and state this clearly. Our council, both the village attorney and the attorney who was representing the village in this matter, has strongly suggested that it would not be proper or not be in the best interest of the village for you to attend. I have no information from your council. We have nothing in writing from your council. There was no, as far as I know, there was no confirmant with your council and with our council. And I believe if you attend, you are putting this community in danger and I will not participate in that discussion.
The attorney that it represents me has been in touch with Mike. He has not answered them.
So we, we, we don't have any feedback on that. You have been advised by the people who represent this community that that would not be a good way to move forward for this community. I'm asking you to look out for the best interest of this community by recusing yourself. This is an important decision you're about to make right now. And it's putting the community before yourself.
I'm putting the community before myself and I have talked to the hard counsel. And my counsel has talked, has communicated with Frankel. Frankel has not answered him. The understanding was, as I understand it from him and his discussions with Frankel, that I would participate.
There wasn't a discussion with Frankel. You just said that. It's either yes.
I said, I said the second time, the second email that was, first one was a discussion.
There's been nothing materially changed since the last time Frankel told you it was not a good idea and our village attorney both told you it was not a good idea. All right. I'm gonna take these votes separately. Orgy, vote on 1A.
Trustee Young?
Were we voting on?
We're voting on boards and commissions. Boards and commissions.
Aye.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee DeFor?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. The next item, 1B, village manager EEOC complaint against the board of trustees. Call roll. This is a vote for whether we, we, we meet with the attorney to discuss the EEOC complaint, which Trustee Natchez has now told us.
I will not, I will not attend.
Call roll.
Wait a minute, I'll clarify something. We will decide that. I'll hear from a council when we get there. So don't, I don't want to get into this catch 22 that we entered and we all, I will hear from both. I will hear, correct, but I'm clarifying my vote early on or having discussions.
I mean, I told them.
Before, before you call, before you call the vote, sir, which I have a right to do. That's what I'm saying. This is part of, this is part of the discussion. I was just, you didn't give a chance. So I'm saying, I'm clarifying that I will, immediately will hear from council as soon as we get in there as, because we have to, we do have to hear from council on, on this matter. It's a very important matter for the village, as you just said. All right, so you can call the roll where you want.
Trustee Young?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes, I want to hear from council.
Trustee DeFor?
Yes, I want to hear from council.
Mayor Murphy? Well, let me point out, we have heard from council before. There is nothing that has been materially changed. You know, this is a semantic dodge. I vote no. Now, VOM versus Mr. CED. Call the roll. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
DeFor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to executive session.
Okay. Just think crap out of it.
Hello, sir.
Hello, sir.
Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Mamaraic. Let's fix the sound. My mic, my mic. Sound? Okay, good. Good evening. And welcome to the Village of Mamaraic Board of Trustees meeting. First, I'd like to do some housekeeping. We came out of an executive session. In that executive session, the Village of Mamaraic voted to settle a lawsuit in the amount of $250,000. Village of Mamaraic versus Seattle. That's $250,000 to us. We accepted that settlement. It was unanimous vote. There was an item on the agenda about an EEOC complaint that we could not discuss because Trustee Natchez would not leave. But we will hopefully get to that by the time. So I need a motion. Ending that executive session.
So moved.
Second, or we call roll. Trustee Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four? Trustee to four? You have to do it orally, not raise your hand. You have to say it.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Now I need a motion, closing the work session. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Mamaraic Board of Trustees' regular meeting for March 14, 2022. Please join me through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And first is the adoption of the agenda and your motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
What? Oh, I make a, I'm sorry. I make a motion to open the meeting.
Alright, so moved.
All in favor of opening the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Adoption of the agenda.
One more.
I need a second.
Second.
All the roll. Trustee Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Okay. The first item is communication to the board. Okay. I see two hands up. Glenn and Robert. Let's go to Robert because Glenn is a frequent, frequent caller. Robert? Unmute yourself if your hand is up. Robert?
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
This will be short. I'd like to make a nonpartisan statement to the mayor and all the trustees. Please attend to the people's business and refrain from making negative comments about your fellow trustees just because they may disagree with you. This does not reflect well on the friendly village. My statement. Thank you.
What's up, Glenn?
Good evening, everyone. We have some good news. The, the yesterday fell below 1,000 for New York. So we continue to move in the right direction and hopefully by summer, we can be back to full activities all over the village. Um, I continue to hear reference to we're awash with money. We have money all, but we are not awash with money. We are going to be tight with cash. Uh, I don't think the projections that we're going to be finding up here are correct. I look at the reports that come out every two weeks. And understand, we have a lot of FEMA expenses along with debt. We may have to go into the fund for a million or $2 to cover the FEMA debt if we don't get paid any FEMA money before June 1st. There's one item that's throwing off the numbers slightly is we did receive $1.6 billion from CHIPS. But this money is a cash through. It's used for capital paving projects. It will never be part of our operating budget. There can't, therefore that money can't be treated as such. So just, just be aware again, you, you have another program that you're, you're going to add today with, with the, um, with the police passes. Um, you're about to get hit with, um, a bunch of sororities. You already had one before you. You got two more coming at you from Ryne Neck. You got one already approved from the Village of Mamaraic, uh, town of Mamaraic for $19,000. And they got another 22 going through the court system right now. And these are all commercial sororities. Most of them are probably going to be solved before the end of this year. So just be a little bit careful when you're stating we're flush with money. Don't worry about it. See how, see how the numbers come out. The numbers that I would like to see is, uh, is our projected state aid still what it is or is it going up? I believe we're at $119,000. How much have we put in to recover for FEMA for the pandemic in 2020? How much money have we requested for reimbursement for the storm of August 2020? How much money have we requested from, uh, for the pandemic for 2021? And how much money have we requested from FEMA for, um, Ida slash Henry for 2021? And is the money that we request for FEMA is FEMA's reimbursed it back to us 80%? And do we have any news yet whether the state is going to reimburse us any other funds? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is presentations. And the first presentation is from the St. Patrick's, Sound Shore St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. We are back in full swing this year. They'll be marching on Sunday. I encourage everyone to come out and support the parade. It is not just a good day for the Irish. It's a good day for the whole community. So I will turn it over. Mr. Murphy, are you going to lead this and introduce your members then? Is that how we're doing it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Matt Sullivan, the official masters of ceremonies for the Sound Shore St. Patrick's Day Parade. Matt, take it away.
Thank you. I just want to point out, while Mr. Murphy is a friend, we are not related.
Thanks a lot, Michael. On behalf of the Sound Shore St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, thank you all for this opportunity to address the Board of Trustees as well as the citizens of our great large Mount Mamaraic community via LMC Media, our community's premier media center. I'm Matt Sullivan, Executive Director of LMC Media. And I also happen to have the proud distinction of being the official parade master of ceremonies for this year. I'll be announcing the parade. I'll be announcing the parade live from the official grand marshal viewing stand on Mamaronek Avenue. And it is my absolute honor to present to you the co-grand marshals of our 2022 parade, Ms. Kate Bialo, hailing from County Larchmont, and Dr. Joe Durney, hailing from County Porchester.
Yep. First of all, Matt, as excited as you are to be the emcee of the parade, we are even more excited. And I also want to make sure that everybody knows that you have a brand new baby boy named Asher, who was born a couple of weeks ago. Congratulations to you. I've seen pictures. He's absolutely adorable. Fortunately, he doesn't look like his father, so that's a good thing. He obviously takes that for his mother. Exactly, exactly. So yes, I am absolutely thrilled to be a co-marshal of the 2022 Sound Shore St. Patrick's Day Parade. And you might wonder why we have co-marshall. This is not something that has been part of our tradition in the past. But I was originally supposed to be the grand marshal in 2020, but COVID had other ideas about that. And my wonderful co-marshal, Joe Durney, was supposed to be the grand marshal in 2021, but COVID still had other ideas about that. So we are absolutely thrilled in 2022, March 2022, to be marching together arm in arm as co-grand marshals of the 2022 Sound Shore St. Patrick's Day Parade. We are also extremely grateful to the Village of Mamaronek for giving us the permission and the blessing to have our parade down Mamaronek Avenue, which is the best place to have the St. Patrick's Day Parade this side of Dublin. We also want to thank the Village of Mamaronek Fire Department, Police Department, and of course, the Department of Public Works and Department of Parks and Recreation, all of whom will have a big role in helping this parade to be the best parade we've had in our 12 years of existence. So thank you so much. And now over to my co-grand marshal, Joe Durney.
Thank you, Kate. My name is Joe Durney, and I was chosen as the 2021 grand marshal. Although the Sound Shore St. Patrick's Day Parade is honored to march down Mamaronek Avenue, it's truly a Sound Shore parade representing the entire Sound Shore community from Porchester, my hometown, to the Pelums in celebration of Irish heritage and the American immigrant experience. So we thank you and invite you and the Board of Trustees, the good citizens of Larchmont, Mamaronek community, and the entire Sound Shore community to march with us on Sunday, March 20th. We look forward to having you and want to thank you very much.
Just to remind of you is what time does the parade kick off?
Steps off at 1:30. So the marchers begin lining up at 12:30. They're going to line up across from Mamaronek Avenue School, march straight down Mamaronek Avenue and right into Harbor Island Park. And for those of us who can't attend physically, or if you're in Ireland and you'd like to watch, you can of course tune in, lncmedia.org will be doing a live stream of the parade. And we want to thank our sponsors, Orange Bank and Trust. And we look forward to seeing all of you and marching or cheering on our marchers as we celebrate Irish heritage and of course, the American immigrant experience. So on behalf of the parade committee and LMC Media, thank you very much.
It'll be the best one yet. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for doing this. I really appreciate it. It warms me heart. And Kate, thank you for being gracious, awaiting these two years and for sharing the honor with Mr. Durney.
It'll be worth the wait, believe me.
Okay, great. We'll have a doubly good parade.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Bye.
And the next up is our friends from O'Connor Davies, the Village of Mamaronek, Mamaronek Quarters. And please give the presentation time, Mr. Holden?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I am good. I like to say that, you know, now that baseball is back, I am pinch hitting for Chris Kopp tonight on the presentation. He is, he is up in Albany at a, at a, at another meeting. I'm here tonight also with Gary Miller, who was our supervisor actually during the audit. So we're both going to kind of take you through the, the presentation that we have. Gary is controlling the screen. So we're just going to summarize what happened in the, the village for the year ended May 21 from a financial perspective. So next slide, Gary. So what we're going to cover tonight in these brief number of slides, I know you have a lot on the agenda. We're going to talk about some of the required communications as auditors that we have to provide to all our clients. And then we're really going to take a look at your, your numbers of what happened during the year ended May 21. So we're going to look at your revenues and expenditures compared to what had been budgeted for your general fund, which is obviously your primary operating fund. Then we're going to dive down, look at your major revenues in that fund. We're going to even give you a five-year history of some of those bigger revenue items. So you could see trends as to what is going on with your revenues. Then we're going to do the same thing on the expenditure side, both the current year and what's gone on the last five years. And then most importantly, we're going to take a look at your fund balance for the general fund, your, your savings account. And we're going to look at, look, take a look at that retrospectively as well. You do operate a couple of other funds and we will briefly touch on the fund balances in those funds. And then you also have to present in your financial statement, something called the Statement of Net Position or what we call a government-wide financial statement. It kind of converts what you have to do on the fund level and makes you look as if you were a, a real business that, that did accounting the way the real world has to account for its finances. And we'll take a look at that as well. So we start off on the next slide with what your responsibilities are as those charged with governance for the village. You are required and, you know, through your, your finance folks to select and implement appropriate accounting policies to make sure that you are fairly presenting your financial statements in accordance with what's called US GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. In order to generate those numbers, to make sure that they are fairly presenting what happened in the village, you have to have proper internal controls over your financial reporting system. If, if the processes and procedures are, are not really strong and not really good, you know, garbage in, garbage out, you won't get, you know, fairly presented financial statements. Obviously, as a village in the state of New York, there are numerous laws, regulations, and then things that, that you must follow, especially when it comes to any federal dollars that have been flowing in, especially during the pandemic times. You know, to make sure that you are in compliance with all those requirements. For us to issue the opinions that we issue on your financials, we are required to get from you any financial records, you know, that we believe are, are appropriate, you know, for us to review as, as part of the audit. And of course, as, as the Board of Trustees, you know, we, we talk about this in, in the commercial world as well, that you have to set the proper tone at the top that flows down the rest of the way through the village to make sure all this information is presented properly. Now, our responsibilities on the next slide are basically the deliverables that we are provided to you and that we're discussing here tonight. So the most important thing is the audit report that we generate for you. So even though the report is yours and we assist in its preparation, the only part of that report that belongs to us is at the very beginning of it. And that's the independent auditor's report or the auditor's opinion. I'm proud to say that we've issued what's known as an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements of the village. That's the highest form of assurance that an auditor can provide any client. It basically says that we believe that the financials, statements that we're about to discuss the numbers on fairly present what happened in the, in the village this year. We would have also provided you with what we call like a management letter and other required communications that we must provide to all boards. We would also be required to communicate with you if we came across during the audit any fraud or illegal acts. Happy to report that we did not come across that as part of this annual audit. We had no difficulties in, in doing the audit. All the, the finance folks cooperated with us, gave us all the information that we needed to, to, to get to this point. Any adjustments that we found have been booked. There's nothing that we call an uncorrected misstatement that, you know, we just left, you know, the village booked any adjustments that, that we provided to them. And during the audit, we did not have any disagreements with management. So with that, we're now going to go into, you know, a high-level view of the numbers. And then Gary will take you through some of the details. So this is your general fund. As I mentioned earlier, it's your primary operating fund. And again, this is at a very high level. Your first column here is the original budget. This is what the, the board approved to, to start the, the 2021 fiscal year. You estimated all revenue sources for this fund to come in at about 36.5 million. You estimated expenditures to be 37.8 million. So there was going to be a shortfall there. There's some, something called other financing sources, which are generally like transfers from other funds. So what you see in the first column is you actually anticipated a decline in fund balance of $1.2 million. And you balance that by utilizing previously accumulated fund balance from previous years. Some of that was money that was given back to taxpayers in the form of a lower tax levy when you appropriate fund balance. Some of it are encumbrances that carried over from the previous year. But when you get to the bottom of that column, you, you come to zero. You have a balanced budget as required by New York State law. The final budget was during the year, certain amendments are made to the budget. Certain changes are made as, as the year goes along. And so all these changes have to be approved by the board. None of this can't just be done by the finance folks. The, the, these were all board-approved changes. So revenues were modified up slightly, very minimally. Expenses did change, and Gary's going to go through what, what some of the, the changes were. And so overall, in this column, you see now an expected use of fund balance that grew to be over $3 million, about 3.1 million from the original 1.2. So the revised plan had your fund balance going down about $3.1 million. However, when you look in the third column, this is what actually happened. And Gary will, will take a deeper dive into these numbers. But you could see that your revenues came in at 37.9 million or about 1.2 million better than that final budget. Your expenses only came in at 36.6 million or about 3.4 million less than your budget. And so overall, when you get towards the bottom, the third number up in the actual column, you see a positive 1,778. That means you added 1,778 to your fund balance. So compared to the expectation in the budget that you would potentially reduce your fund balance by 3.1 million, that's why you see the variance in the last column as being a positive 4.8 million. You did 4.8 million better than your, your budget plan. So overall, that 1.7 million of fund balance that got added this year with revenues exceeding expenses, you started the year with a fund balance of $15.3 million. And so you've ended the year, as you could see, with fund balance of 17.1 million. So on the next couple of slides, Gary will take you through some of the details of these numbers.
Mr. Holden, before you begin, can I just clarify that this is for the year that ended May 31st, 2021? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just for the folks playing along with the home version.
Yes, we, as auditors, we're, we're always like a year behind.
Thank you.
So yeah, we're not, we're not talking about what's going on right now in your fiscal year.
God, thank you.
Gary, you're welcome. So Gary will now take you through some of the major revenue areas in the, in the general.
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So this dives, as we mentioned, a little bit deeper into some of the major revenue categories compared to budget. First item to just note though, is that, you know, this fiscal year really began right at the beginning of the pandemic. And we can see in, you know, in the budgeting, that it appears that the village was relatively conservative. You know, for example, the non-property tax distribution, that's your sales taxes. You can see that you, that you actually budgeted a little less for this year than you had received in the, in the previous year. Obviously with a lot of unknowns with COVID. You know, there was a conservative approach to it. Going to go through four of the major variances. The first is, and the largest again, is that non-property tax revenue, which as you can see is a $1.3 million positive variance. That really represents the, the net impact. Everything else kind of nets out. So, um, you know, you collected 4.5 million dollars in sales taxes. This is something that we've seen throughout, you know, local governments in the, in the lower Hudson Valley. You know, we've really had a strong rebound in sales, particularly there was a lot of internet sales. And if I believe for the last quarter of the, this year, just to give you a rough idea, the growth rate was still 12% in sales taxes overall for the lower Hudson Valley. So those rates have declined a little bit, but the growth has still been good. One other quick point on that is to keep in mind that that prior year number of 3.7 million did not include the 1% increase in Westchester County for a few of the months. So it's not a pure apples to apples, the 4.5 versus the 3.7. There were two months in that prior year where the sales tax rate was a little bit lower. So there was, you know, a little bit of an impact to that. Next up, you'll see again, a couple of items we included here primarily because they have had a lot of fluctuations given the COVID situation. You can see your day camp fees were, were quite, are not that much. But what we wanted to point out there was that normally this runs about $300,000 a year. So again, you budgeted very conservatively there. It wound up coming in even a little lower. But, but on average, those numbers have been much higher.
It's because we couldn't, we couldn't have as many kids because of COVID.
Right, right. Two items that I'm going to combine together then, if you see those permit fees where you were 180 over your final budget and your mortgage tax where you were 190. Again, this is a trend we've seen in a lot of local governments. This is a combination of construction that went on. A lot of folks doing renovations, given that they were at home as well as a lot of refinancings with rates going down. So there you had some very positive variances. Finally, the one downside was in the fines and forfeited bail. Now, the, the justice court was closed for a good portion of the year. And also with some of the parking, you know, less parking going on as well as I believe some waivers and things. There was, you know, less in the fine area. That has, you know, we've seen that rebound this year somewhat in, in a lot of places. So that's kind of a quick highlight overall versus budget. Next up, just going to very briefly go through. We present this because, you know, hopefully it's a, a high-level summary that might help you a little bit with some of your budgeting efforts. Not going to go through and, and cover every number. You can see, you know, what they are. But just want to again, give you the ideas of what's been, what's happened over a number of years. I'll just quickly highlight that on your property taxes, they have ranged an increase of 1.2 to 2.7% increases over the last five years. So relatively low rates of increase and within, you know, your property tax caps. Again, you can see the increases in the, uh, in the sales tax, which is the non-property tax distribution. And again, that 2019, if you see that 1290 versus 2020, those, the, the year did not include, 20 did not include the full year of, uh, of the tax rate increase. Beyond that, again, just, just to give you some ideas on where some of those trends are. Again, if you looked at the day camp fees going back, you're in the 300 to four, you know, 500,000 range on that. Next up, some of the expenditures. If you see here again, across the board, compared to your final budgets, you have positive variances. You spent less than, than your final budget planned on almost across the board. These increases, if you look at the final budget, we talked about you had grown those. A lot of those are related to costs related to COVID or costs related to storm damage. So that, that drove a lot. You can see that's in some of the other expenditures, not these sort of recurring categories that we have here. In the, in the, the largest variance, the overall, this, the other category, most of that is your general government, right? So, you know, your, your mayor's office, finance, IT, all of those support functions. And you can see that you had about a million dollars. There was 1.7 overall. A million of that is in the general government. And then some of the other areas were home and community. You had four. You had four hundred and twenty thousand in savings versus the budget and in culture and rec three hundred and forty. So kind of a pretty good story across the board versus budget on the expense side. Finally, here we have, you know, five-year trends again on the on some of your expenditures. I think the thing I would just point out on this is the relative stability across the board in many of these expenditures, you know, being managed pretty smoothly. The safety inspections were down again due to there was fewer, I believe, you know, events and things that needed to be to be inspected. One last thing is the the ERS PFRS number did go up a little bit. That was mostly driven by your police retirement contribution, where the rates for the this year were higher as set by the Office of the State Comptroller. You're going to see that reverse in the in the coming year. But that was that's something to to point out. So that is the sum on really on your your profit and loss statement, as we call it, or your statement of of activities. So I'll turn it back over to Scott to talk about fund balance.
Thank you, Garrett. So as Gary said, and as I said, I think earlier in this presentation, that overall this year, fund balance went up in your general fund by the one point seven million back on an earlier slide. And that's why, when you look at the bottom of the twenty twenty one column on this presentation, you see, you know, that the total fund balance has grown to seventeen point one million dollars at the end of the twenty one year. Your fund balance is made up of several components. In twenty one, you have some small amount in prepaid expenditures that are considered non-spendable because the cash went out the door for these, but they benefit the next fiscal year. Then you have restricted fund balance. And one of the changes in the restricted fund balance is this new thing for special purposes. In the past, this was in its own fund, but under a new governmental accounting standards board pronouncement, it now is required to be reported within the general fund. So the resources from this other fund came into the general fund, and then it's restricted. It had no, you know, true impact on your your current year revenues or expenses. There's some money committed, as you could see, for some future capital projects. So this would require board action to 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 move these funds and and use them for the capital purpose that you are intending of three hundred fifteen thousand. Looks like about twenty thousand was used during this year. The assigned fund balance is made up of two components. Four hundred eighty one thousand are your purchase orders. So these were commitments that you made to purchase goods or services prior to May thirty first. And they were not completed as of that date, maybe the goods didn't arrive, supply chain issues, whatever, whatever it might be. So there's four hundred eighty one thousand of of items that were intended to be spent in the twenty twenty one fiscal year that were not finished being spent. Probably most of this has been spent already in the twenty one twenty two year. That four hundred eighty one thousand amends the budget that you're in right now for twenty one twenty two to allow you to fund those obligations that that were committed for. You gave back, like you have for the last four years, six hundred thousand dollars. When you put the twenty one twenty two budget together that you're in right now, you estimated that your expenses would exceed your revenues by six hundred thousand dollars. And you balance that spending plan by taking money from your fund balance, your savings account. Because if you hadn't done that, you would have either had to raise property taxes an extra six hundred thousand or reduce spending six hundred thousand or some combination of of both of those items. So this was a decision that was made by the board to give back, you know, essentially six hundred thousand in property tax relief for twenty one twenty two. So when you have a total fund balance of seventeen point one million dollars and you back out all these other pieces, what you see you're left with is an unassigned fund balance that totals fourteen point six million dollars or about two million dollars higher than what was in there in the prior year, mostly from the profit that, as we said, you generated this year, about one point seven million dollars. When you compare that unassigned fund balance of fourteen point six million to your current budget of approximately thirty nine point five million, that amount represents approximately thirty seven percent of your budget. If you take the total fund balance of the seventeen million compared to the thirty nine point five, that's about forty three percent. That is a very strong fund balance position. But as someone who is working here on Mamaroneck Avenue in Harrison, we we see, you know, we saw obviously a lot of damage after this fiscal year in the Mamaroneck area from all the storms that happened. So, you know, for you to have this kind of healthy fund balance is probably something that 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 is important, given, you know, the the massive infrastructure damage that that was caused by these by these storms. So the village is in in a strong financial position for its general fund. Just to touch briefly on, and we're almost done, just to touch briefly on a couple of the other funds that the village operates. The water fund started the year with about two point four million in it. And again, it's it's based on, you know, water usage. Some of this money, you know, comes from, I think, the Joint Water Works. And, you know, again, with, you know, potentially during a pandemic time with more people being home, maybe more water usage versus, you know, maybe people traveling i- in the past. That's probably one of the the drivers for the increase in the water fund balance. Capital fund is more of a long-term nature. It shows a deficit, but that's because there is borrowing to be done on certain projects right now. Many of your projects are actually funded by interfund loans from like the because of your strong fund balance position, you fronted the cash that is needed to to keep these projects going from your your general fund primarily. Once the bonds for these projects are issued, then the general fund can be repaid some of the cash advances, and it would eliminate the deficit in the in the capital funds. Sewer fund kind of was relatively, you know, unchanged from the previous year. Fund balance going from three hundred thirty five thousand to three hundred fifty seven thousand. You then have a debt service fund that started the year with four point one million. You would, you're using approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to offset some of your debt service costs. And now there's four point three million in there. These monies can only be used to offset future principal on your debt service obligations going forward. So every year you budget for principal and interest on your borrowed monies. This money could be used to help offset those costs against the principal amount that that you have to pay each year. And then finally, there is a statement in your financial statements. It appears on the full financial statement on page thirteen. And, you know, sometimes, unfortunately, the way the Governmental Accounting Standards Board makes us present financial statements, this statement kind of has to go first. The statement of net position, which, as I mentioned at the outset, has to do with what we call full accrual accounting, treating the village as if it was a commercial enterprise. And and everything gets, you know, picked up in the financial statements, all long-term obligations and so forth. So what you see on here is, as we presented, on the first line, the fund balance, the thing you deal with on a daily basis, your general fund, your water fund, your sewer fund, debt service fund, you ended the year with a sixteen million dollar total fund balance across all the funds. Yet on this statement, and it's the first statement that's in the financial statements, the bottom line number is what shows a negative forty five million dollars. So people might say, hey, we're not in good shape here, we're we're forty five million dollars in the hole. That's not exactly true, because one of the main things that you see on here near the bottom of this list of things is this OPEB liability for ninety eight million dollars, a negative effect of ninety eight million dollars. OPEB is your other post-employment benefits. These are the benefits that you've agreed to pay your retirees in retirement in in paying for their health coverage. And this is a present value calculation that your actuary does for you to present value that future benefit over, you know, many years back to today. So this is a long-term liability. Obviously, each year in the budget, you have to budget your health insurance on a pay-as-you-go amount. You have your insurance, a cost for health insurance, you budget that every year, and you pay that every year. This is a very long-term future look at what those obligations are, along with your bonds that you have out there that you've issued primarily for capital-type construction. So those are things, if if somebody asks you, why does this statement show a negative forty five million? Yours and most municipalities in New York State are 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 showing a deficit on this schedule primarily because of OPEB. Also, because New York State does not allow you to fund OPEB liabilities or anybody. That would require state legislation, kind of like the state pension system. The state pension system's in good shape because it has assets. It has something each year to it. And, you know, the the state pension systems have billions of dollars in assets while setting these future liabilities for pensions. With OPEB, you're just a pay-as-you-go payer, you pay your premiums every month, and that's it. There's no set aside for for any future costs. So until New York State legislation changes, everybody will be facing these these OPEB liabilities. And that's why that statement, for most places, comes out to be a a negative net position. So with that, Gary and I have probably spoken far too much already. We'd be glad to take any comments or questions that you have on any of these numbers.
I'm going to board any comments, questions. I just want to point to thank you for a thorough job and to thank our staff, once again, ensuring that we are in good fiscal health. Any board? Nobody?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, Paul.
Have a good evening.
Mayor.
Mayor.
What?
Thanks for saying that, because we work very hard on the budget and we try to control costs. And we try to look for every avenue of revenue that we can. And Augie, Dan, and I, along with our support staff, obsess about it. So I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. And I like it. I like the title of your.
Yeah, I just changed it. I just changed it. Thanks, Scott, for giving me the number.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Scott.
Nice job.
All right, first item on the agenda. Order of bills, manual vouchers. And tonight's manual voucher number is twelve thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy seven cents. Any questions or concerns from the board? None? Glenn, you have your hand up for this item? Glenn?
Glenn, unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah. Yeah, I actually had a one question for the auditors, and that would have been on page thirty seven. Last year, we issued five million dollars worth of debt and paid one point nine five worth of maturity. That means that we went borrowed about three million dollars more than we than we paid back. So in actuality, we actually spent one point three million dollars more than we brought in last year. And you just can't dismiss long-term debt because eventually you have to pay it. So we, operating side, we were ahead. But when you add in the fact that we bonded three million dollars of three million dollars more than we paid back in the bond, that means that we ran a deficit overall. Thank you.
It's a different, we didn't run a deficit, they were clear about that. That is dangerous talk, especially from someone from the Budget Committee. We did not run a deficit, we are not allowed to run deficits under New York State law.
That's correct. It's not reading the numbers correctly, that's what that is.
Not reading the numbers correctly, and it's extrapolating, where you don't have all the information. Next, I need a a motion on the order of bills. So second, what we call.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
That is.
Dan, unmute yourself. All right, I gotta mute him. All right, Dan.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, next up is the regular order of the bills, and this is three million two hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred nine dollars and seventy three cents. Anybody in the board have any questions, concerns?
No.
Need a motion? Any second?
Second.
Augie, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
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 Before?
Why is? Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The old business, new business, resolution authorizing contract legitimacy to board. One was to not move forward on that. Resolution authorizing budget transfers for purchase of public safety customer survey toolkit. This is for the police department to better evaluate the customer service aspect of this. This is thirty seven hundred seventy dollars transferred from a contingent account to police department contract services.
I'll make the motion, and I'll note that the chief sent an email that the word anonymous will be on the card so that it will be clear to people who are getting these cards that their input will be anonymous.
Okay, I will second that motion. Augie, please.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next up is resolution authorizing execution of paving contracts to harbor on park. Last time this kind of this park was paved was thirty years ago, when the recreation director was three years old. The 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 folks that are doing the pavement, Moreno Brothers Corporation, they did the large paving contract that the village did a few years ago. And I watched them pave Mamaroneck Avenue in the middle of the night. And they were well-oiled machine, I'll tell you that. They knew what they were doing. We 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 got this through the Village of Scars, they will take it back on this, they'll discuss that contract. Jared, you have anything to add?
No, Mayor, you said everything and, you know, reminded me that Jason's very young, so.
I'm only saying, because he pointed that out himself when we were.
Of course, of course he did.
Wise beyond his years.
This is four hundred ninety two thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars and sixty six. And in just taking a walk or a ride down the park, you will see why this is necessary to do as ASAP.
Mayor?
Yes, Sally?
I updated the resolution and added that it would be up to that number, not go over that number, as trustee to four had asked, and you agreed.
Excellent, excellent. We have, we have a comment from the audience, Glenn?
I'm going to mute Glenn.
Glenn, go ahead.
Yes. This is going to be paid out of through capital spending, correct?
Yes.
And number two, I know there's a section of the parking lot that's owned by the county. Did we contact the county and ask the county if they wanted to pick it back off of us to do their paving?
The county has said they were going, they're going to pay behind the sewage treatment plant themselves.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh. Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Augie, please. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas? The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Next up is item four D, the LED retrofit and upgrade of Lanza Field Lights. For those of you who have never been down, uh, Harbor Island during a spring, summer or fall evening, there is usually a fall game going on under the lights. Those lights were put in. Late eighties, early nineties, uh, too much, uh, strum and drang and, uh. I think it's been well documented that it was a good. Decision that the village made to put in those lights. Those lights are big old incandescent bulbs that use a lot of electricity. They require, uh, staff to be there to turn them on, to monitor some, monitor them when they're on and then to turn them off. This could all now be done with a lot less electricity, with better control of the lights and without the overtime incurred. So this is two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to outfit the lights for LEDs. Light emitting diode retrofit. Lanza Field. Uh, any questions or concerns?
No.
Glenn, you have your hand up? Okay, now. I need a motion. So moved. I have a second, please.
Second.
Augie, please. Trustee? Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas? Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. The next up is item sewer rent fee for Westchester joint waterworks customers in the Village of America. What this will do, uh, this allows the community to pay for sewer repairs and sewer upgrades. Via. Via customers actually usage. You know, it used to be that, you know, the sewer expenses were incurred based upon your property taxes. So, uh, an eighty-year-old person who owned a house and paying twenty thousand dollars in taxes. Was paying the same, uh. As a family of six in a house paying twenty thousand dollars in taxes. Which, you know, they might be taking twelve showers a day and using assorted facilities much more often. Uh, and this also captures, uh, people that aren't on the tax rolls. The the school system pays this, churches pay this. Other, uh, Westchester County pays this, uh, who is a big user of, uh. Water in the Village of America and it comes to, uh. Comes to a dollar forty-five per thousand gallons. So the less water you use, the less you pay. That in some substances is what this is. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Glenn, you have your hand up?
Yeah, is, um, is that a raise over our previous year?
This is just, no, it's not. This is just a different way of configuring it. So the Westchester. Let me, let me finish the the answer, please. So the Westchester joint waterworks doesn't have to have three separate accounting systems, uh, for the three municipalities.
Yeah. Oh, so this was that, that, that was presented before and we're finally voting on it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we are. I need a motion. So moved. I'll second. All equal rule. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Um, I'm going to vote yes, but was this a work session?
Yeah, a while back.
A while back. Okay, it was several. It was, it was like about more than a month ago, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Scheduling a public hearing on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three tentative budget. Uh, this schedules the public hearing for March twenty-eighth, which is two weeks hence from tonight. Any questions or concerns? I need a motion, please.
So moved.
I can.
Hold the roll, please. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas? Yes.
Trustee before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Resolution scheduling public hearing for PLB twenty twenty-two to exceed tax cap if needed. Now, I've explained this before, uh, if if the community wants to go over the tax cap. Do we even know what our tax cut is this year?
Five hundred thousand.
Do we know what number that is? Two point one point?
No, I don't know.
Okay, we don't know what the tax cap number is at this moment. We will find it out soon, I'm sure. But this allows the community to go over the tax cap if need be. I don't think we have, we definitely haven't while I was mayor. But it's good to have the law in your back pocket in case something happens between now and, uh, the time we pass the budget. That, uh, would require us, uh, to go over the cap. Uh, so this is scheduling a public hearing. And a public hearing would be. For March twenty eighth. Any questions or concerns?
One item, uh, Mr. Mayor, the resolution, it says, uh. The March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, it'll be March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Yeah, that that is an important. Thank you.
She is not in the capital budget this year.
Time machine. All right, anybody have any questions or concerns?
No.
Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Augie? Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Oh.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
No.
Murphy? Hi. Petty cash. Resolution establishing petty cash account for building. This is a petty cash account of a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars. To give the building department the ability to make change when people pay in cash. Jerry, any questions, concern, anything you want to add on this?
No, Mayor, it just, uh, resets our drawer. Uh, as you know, or many people know, I'm up at the building department at least three days a week and we have also. Helping us is Jonathan Corvino from Augie's. Uh, office. Uh, we're, uh, doing a lot of, making a lot of changes up in the building department and this is part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions or concerns from the board? Need a motion? So moved. Need a second?
Second.
Hold the roll. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Resolution, uh, item one I, resolution, appointing a poet laureate. For the Village of America and I believe the town of America is going to appoint the same poet laureate. For years, we had a poet laureate. Uh, she was a lovely, lovely lady named, um, Ms. Mary Louise Cox. And she, uh, passed away recently and the village, uh. And the town believed that it's good to have another one. Ms. Cox, uh, was instrumental in, uh, doing the poetry live, uh. In the village, which, uh, stirred and, uh. Inspired a lot of young people to write poetry and to express their thoughts, uh, through poetry and their feelings. And if 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 you have never attended, I I urge you to attend or at least watch it on, uh, LMC TV. We have a lot of talented. And heartfelt youngsters in this community. And but this is to appoint a gentleman named Mr. Michael Collins. As the village is poet laureate, uh, Mr. Collins is a published and acclaimed, uh, poet. I asked, uh, the arts council, uh, for information on Mr. Collins, uh, last night. And they sent me his website and he actually has a book of poetry that was inspired by his, uh. Contemplative time in Harbor Island Park. You know, he he writes a lot of interesting, uh, poems and he was a teacher. Uh, poetry at NYU and I think he would be a good person to fill in for Ms. Cox. Not that anyone could fill in for Ms. Cox, but he would, he'd be able to, uh, move that program. Forward in a positive direction. Uh, so I would be honored, uh, in, uh, the month of March to nominate a gentleman named Michael Collins. To. Be the Village of America's poet laureate. I need a second.
Second.
Call roll, please. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
With pleasure, yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Resolution authorizing the retention of GOV HR to Kentucky Village attorney search. I know that this is something that trustee Natchez, uh, to four and Lucas, uh, are, uh, champion, championing. I I I personally, I I I don't think it's a good idea. I I listen. I was behind the hiring of Janet and Saudi full-time village attorney. Uh, it was a different time and a different, uh. Situation in the village. We had gone through a point where we had spent ten million dollars on litigation over four or five years. You know, I believe that the village is being well-served by Mrs. Pozzino and his firm. Uh, we have litigation. People have sued us. You know, we have three Village of American district leaders who are currently suing the village. You you know, that that is not litigation we started. We have Hampshire suing the village. That is not litigation we started and I don't believe it's litigation that's been stirred. And I've seen litigation stirred before in my life and we are doing very well in all those litigations. We won the first three. We're in good shape on the Hampshire litigation. And I believe, uh, you know, Mr. Pozzino has been guiding this village well. I don't think that this is a time to change horses. And I had a conversation, uh, with the head of GOV HR today and I, because I wanted to tell her, because I really do like her. She has worked with the Village of America before and I wanted to tell her I was voting no on this tonight. And that it was not a reflection upon how I viewed her. Because if I, if I was in favor of doing this, I would actually encourage hiring her. But she didn't know that, uh, it, this wasn't the unanimous choice of the board and that surprised me. And she was taken aback because she will have to ask somebody to, uh, come here and be a village attorney. Without there being the full support of the board in a time when the board is obviously in flux. So I I I don't think that this is a wise time to move forward with this proposal. I think we should shake out and see what the year brings. But that being said, that's, you know, as the man said, that's all I have to say on this. Somebody want to make a motion? Lou?
I'm going to vote no because I, uh, I believe that the the motives behind this may be suspect, given the, uh. Interpersonal relationships with, um. Some of the litigants who sued the village. So, um, I think this needs to wait until after those, uh, those suits have been, uh, been settled. So no.
I'll make a motion to retain GOV HR for an attorney search.
Second.
Hold the roll. Trustee is young?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? No, just know that you're going to be asking someone to come to a village where they don't know if their job is going to be secure in the future.
Well, Tom, unfortunately, you said that to a couple of candidates.
But it's the truth, Nora. I I would not in good conscience let somebody apply for a job knowing that it's insecure.
We do things by a vote of three.
Yeah, that's it.
And you know, usual in the majority rules and it's just unfortunate.
And you're going to do it.
Please finish. Matt, please finish.
Yeah, let her finish, please.
Make a decision. It's a vote of three. And frequently you're not happy with that decision, so you want to do something else. Lots of times I'm not happy with the decision, but it's the decision and we go with the majority. This is a decision that's made. We made a decision a year ago. We offered it to a couple of candidates. Unfortunately. You told them that you, that you didn't support it. It's not, it's not teamwork, Tom. It's not.
No, Nora, should I, should I have lied to them and tell them that I did support? Should I have told them that their job is secure when I don't believe that their job is secure?
Well, they're.
Because, because Nora, you did not tell Joellen.
I did. I did what I did when I talked to her initially. I absolutely said it wasn't.
That's not, she was taken aback by what.
I did tell her that when I.
Not remembered.
Okay, I told her that when I talked to her initially.
And you know what?
Can I say something very briefly?
I'm not, I'm not finished. People need to know what the situation is here. You know, you you're asking people, Nora, I'm talking. You're you're asking people to leave a position. To come to a position where it's not going to be the most stable position. And and that's, and and there's the possibility of that and to not tell them that is disingenuous.
So I guess what I'm hearing is if you don't like the decision. We can have it worked around.
There's a lot of decisions I don't like. And 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 if you've noticed, there's a lot of votes that don't go my way, but I'm not going to let somebody get hired without letting them know how I feel. It's not fair.
Okay, so basically, so basically what you're saying is you're going to block hiring a full-time village attorney.
I'm not. I'm going to tell, I'm going to let that person, I'm going to let that person make a decision like an adult.
Which is a commission that, which is a commitment that we ran on in two thousand seventeen.
And let me tell you something. I I did run on it, but you know what? Part of being an elected official is learning by watching.
Yep.
By by observing. And feeling what you think is best. And if if something that you said four years ago isn't holding true today, you don't have to stick with it. You you could be honest with people and say, what I thought four years ago, based upon what had happened in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, was not then the case in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
In your opinion.
In my opinion, of course, it's all my opinion.
May I, may I very briefly, very briefly? What 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 was the memo that 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 you were mentioning many years ago from very three important lawyers made the case for why an in-house attorney is needed? That hasn't changed. That it's very convenient now to change that doesn't mean that this village is better served by having a. Village attorney and an external attorney, which can be, which should be a good professional such as Bob. Bob maybe continue, but what this village needs is the two of them. Now you can change or not when it's convenient to you, but I come to this not from a political stand, but from what is interested and after five years, it's clear. As I've been in my career as an attorney, in-house, outs-out, that that's what the village needs. So I'm voting unconscious and you never respect those kind of things, but anyway, we'll, we'll.
I respect your vote. I disagree. All I'm saying is I'm not going to hold my tongue when it comes to, it's not fair. How can you ask somebody? Think about this, folks. Seriously, think about this. How can you ask somebody? You're not going to be here, Victor, next year. You're just not going to be. You're not running again and I.
I'll be here. I'll be here. And how do you even mention that? How does it, what does it matter?
Because.
What kind of comment is that?
The board is going to change and the next board might not want to have an in-house attorney. So you you're making a commitment for after you're going to be gone. In essence.
You know, what kind of comment is that?
It's the truth. It's an observation of the truth. I'm sorry if it hurts your feelings.
Oh, feelings attached, sir. Just, that's, that's close. Let's close the discussion. I move to close debate.
Trustee, yeah?
Uh, if this were a four-one vote or or unanimous vote.
I move to close debate. Can I have a second?
You're out of order.
For a four-to-one or or unanimous vote.
There's a second.
Would be well made, but it's three-two and, um, and 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 the mayor is correct, but it's.
We already voted on this. They're wasting time.
You're not voting on it. If you're out of order, we'll move on to the next topic. Resolution except Westchester.
I want to check with Augie. Did the vote, was the vote completed?
No, we voted on this. The motion by the local, second by Dan Natchez, uh. Trustee, no, yes, 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 no.
Trustee, no, yes, 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 no.
Thanks, Augie. Thank you.
So it wasn't debate. There was nothing. I was making a comment that you all jumped on. Accepting Westchester Joint Water Works revert, revert lane replacement project. I explained this in a work session. It's a broken pipe is actually in the city of Rye. It's part of the city of Rye that is serviced by Westchester Joint Water Works. There is a portion of Rye that is not serviced by the private water company, but it's serviced by us. This pipe, though, does provide water to Village of Amerik residents. So what's going on here? We're accepting this as a joint project. That means all three communities pay for the replacement. But then we recover the costs from the residents of Rye via their water bill. So with that being said, it's 425 feet of transact water main of report lane.
The resolution doesn't say all costs and I would like that put in. It has specific figures, but it doesn't say that all costs are, and that's, that allegedly is what the email from Westchester Joint Water Works would indicate. And I would like to put that in the resolution.
Okay, that's fine if you want to put it in, but that's the way it always operates. That's what he pointed out in the email.
So it's in the resolve, the project should be funded through the appropriate water fund allowance for future issuance of debt with. Okay, it should be on the first acceptance. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village board of trustees accepts the capital project as a joint capital project, including all costs associated with the project.
It makes no sense.
I think it does. Then continue and be it further resolved.
It's barely English. I think it should be, if you're going to put all, it should be in the second paragraph, second whereas.
No, because the whereas is an indication, but the be it resolved is the requirement.
Say it again.
Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees accepts the capital project as a joint capital project, including all costs associated with said project. And be it further resolved, blah, blah, blah.
What you're saying then is that we're incurring all costs.
I'm saying that.
That's what you're saying. Yeah, that's exactly what you're saying. But if you put it there, that's exactly what you're saying.
Whereas is are not binding.
Dan, what you're saying, you're resolving that the Village of Amerik.
Okay, then, okay, that, that I will do it this way. Now therefore be resolved that the village board of trustees accepts the capital project as a joint capital project. If I did that, all costs associated with the project are included and then be further resolved.
I, I don't, we've never done that and I'm not going to, if you want to make that amendment.
I'm so moved.
Oh, wait, wait a minute. Let's see if we can phrase it.
Why do we even need to? This, this is, we got an email from Westchester Water Works saying, yes, it will be all costs.
No, it didn't say that. It's, it's, I didn't say that. That's my concern.
This is what we've always done.
Doesn't mean that it's right.
It doesn't mean that it's wrong either, Dan, and you have not the clarity to this.
Order to protect our, this village. And not being paid, not paying things that, that are not being, paying things out of our, out of other things that we don't recoup. That doesn't make sense.
I, I don't see what you're talking about. What example can you give?
How about, wait a minute, how about, how about the second paragraph? From share of 27.6% equates to a village cost not to exceed $104,000.
You can't say not to exceed on something like this because you don't know what's going to happen.
Well, then they have to come back.
Exactly. That's part of the problem.
Okay.
This is a little estimated cost. Why, why, what, excuse me, I'm sorry. Why, in God's name, are we trying to, you know, reinvent the wheel here?
It's protecting our taxpayers.
It, it.
That we don't, that we do not be paying unreasonable things for bond councils and other counsel lawyer other expenses that are incurred on, you know, perfecting this project.
And, and they told you it's all costs. This is just to accept the project. That's all this is. It isn't about.
No, this is committing us.
No, it isn't, Dan. This is just saying that, that this is a joint project. That's what this is. Mr. Pozzino, am I wrong about that?
Excuse me, that's correct, Mayor. The issue is, the issue before the board of trustees is whether this is a joint project or an individual project. The expenditures are made by the joint water works and then charged back.
How many times has been chewed his hair?
I made a motion. Does anybody want a second?
What hap, what happens if the costs go up? I'm just, Tom, what happens if the costs go up?
They come back and they say costs have gone up. We hit rock. You know, the, the price of pipe has tripled in the past month.
Which has happened before.
Yeah, they'll ask the board to adopt a separate resolution.
Yes. They come back. If they go, if they go over our share, if they go over their estimate, they come back. You know, it's like any other thing. They put a contingency in. If they go under, they don't charge us as much.
But Dan's not comfortable with the answer that they got, that they sent today.
All right, well, there's one person.
Well, you know, we all have fiscal responsibilities.
I understand that, Nora. We have to get things done too.
Yeah, we do. And if we did it in a more polite way, it would be nice.
All right, this is, for the last time, this isn't about the cost. All this is about is accepting this as a joint project. That's what this is. They put in, but they could have not put in the cost there. They could have just said, this is a joint project. They do that as a courtesy.
Well, I mean, let's face it.
It's not a courtesy, Tom, but.
It is, Dan. Well, it's, it's a joint project. You have, you have, you can either accept that it's a joint project or not accept that it's a joint project. If you don't accept that it's a joint project, then it becomes a Village of Amerik project and we don't share the cost with the other two communities because it affects our residents. We get, I'm trying to give you a hint here. Our residents that aren't getting their water and Rye residents. Nobody in Harrison's not getting their water. Nobody in the town of Amerik's not getting their water.
Village of Amerik residents aren't getting the water. They're paid. This is for something in Rye.
No, you're wrong, Dan. You didn't listen to the twice I explained it. This is a pipe in Rye that supplies people in the Village of Amerik too. I explained that twice. I got an email from one of them today saying, when are we going to start work on this?
It's a Greenhaven pipe, correct?
Yep. I, I don't understand Dan's motion. I don't know the need for, and it really is a moot point.
You know, you think it's a moot point. I think it would be.
Then second didn't vote on it.
You know what? Okay, I just.
You know what it is? Do you know what it is?
I finish? It would be really nice if a board member raised a concern and other board members were polite and respectful. I think that's a bare minimum of what we should do. I'm willing to go with it for today because I'm really tired of this fighting. But I'm also tired, I'm also tired of disrespecting other people's questions. There's just no. Tom, I'm tired of it.
Questions were asked and answered and I'm sorry that, you know, you're sticking up for your pal Dan there. But you know what, Nora? But you know what, Nora? It, this, this isn't how it works. Sometimes it isn't pretty and this isn't a tea party. It's politics and it's.
And it's not, and it's not.
It's cynical about this, except that it's.
Actually trying to be polite and collegial, which I think is something that everybody on this board needs to. Everybody on this board.
Yeah, it, it, people on this board, people on this board talk about polite and collegial. But then, you know, in reality, you know, you were stabbing each other in the back. But I'm just, I'm just honest about my antipathy. You know, other people just hide it better.
I don't understand the trustee Natchez's suggested amendment.
I don't think anybody does. That's my point.
So where are we? What are we doing?
I made a motion. If somebody seconds it, they second. If they don't, they don't.
Okay. There's no second.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the resolution accepting Westchester Joint Water Works revert land replacement project as is written.
So moved.
Okay, please call roll.
Wait, we get a second, give me a second.
I made the motion, you said.
Oh, okay.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
No.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tufor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Resolution accepting a bench donation of Harbor Island Park. Ms. Janice Gold Clang is, I hope I'm pronouncing your name right.
Yes, it is.
Desires of donating a bench and plaque in the Village of Amerik to be placed in Harbor Island West Basin, loving memory of Roy and Charlotte Gold Clang. In the amount of $2,241. Thank you to the Gold Clang family. Need a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Augie. Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Aye. Communications report round two.
Glenn? Yes. My apologies. I just like to clarify. I'm not saying that we're running a yearly deficit. What I meant to say basically is the debt of the village went up. Our long time debt went up because we spent more in bonds than we paid off in bonds, which exceeded the operating. The operating is fine. But you also have to be continent of the fact that at some point you have to address the fact that you can't bond and, and keep increasing the long-term debt. At some point, there has to be equilibrium between how much you spend in the operating budget to pay your bonds and how much you spend in a given year on new bonds. That's all I was pointing out. Operating, you're absolutely right. I apologize for wording it wrong. The only thing I want you to be aware of is long-term debt. We, we are bonding more than we are paying back in the bonds. And that's been going on for, for a few years. It's something you just have to be aware of and at some point has to be addressed. Um, that you mentioned the flood areas. Two more that you should be looking at is Hoyt Avenue because that completely got, got, got wrecked and Revere Road because that, that's where it starts. That's where the speed starts and it goes all the way down to the village. Hoyt, Hoyt Avenue, the business, Moisture Brothers, they were under 10 feet of water. That whole section going all the way up to Waverly Avenue. It's, it's, it's part of, of the overall problem. When it hits the curves, that water, the water just goes right over the banks and, and off.
Actually, Hoyt Avenue is in the, the area that we talked about.
Yes.
Oh, all, all the way down that far? Okay.
Yeah, we went from the railroad bridge north.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, uh, finally. Nora is right. You guys can disagree on 100 different things and, and you can get heated at times. The bottom line is you have different people who look at the, the village a different way. Actually, Tom, I, I kind of support you sometimes because anytime I see a new village manager, the first thing I tell them is congratulations, welcome to the Village of Amerik. Rent don't buy. Because we, we, at one time we went through many, many village, village attorneys with G. Trizine. That being said, you know, maybe you get somebody and, and you really like them. I don't, I personally don't have a problem with the attorney we have now. I think it's good, but in a three to two vote.
Glenn, what I, what I, what I told the attorneys when, when we were interviewing them was I would give them a fair shot and not make a decision until they had, but you know, I, I was just honest with them. But I had also told them that I would, you know, give them a fair shot.
If that's, I, I can't complain about that because like I said, I've, I've told many of village attorney that at one time that was a high turnover position in this village, you know?
All right. Thanks, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Have a good Patty's Day.
You too. By the way, Yankees made a big trade.
Who?
They got Donaldson. They traded Sanchez, Minnesota. Josh Donaldson, third baseman, shortstop. So something, some homework to do when you get, go home, Tom. Bye-bye.
I watch ESPN tonight. Robert? Oh, you got that?
Yeah, you got unmuted as well.
You're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a nonpartisan statement to the mayor and all the trustees. Please attend to the people's business and refrain from making negative comments about your fellow trustees just because they may disagree with you. This does not reflect well on the friendly village. I felt this was worth repeating. Some of you have not heard it. Thank you. Go ahead. You shake your head. Shake your hand, Tom.
Yeah, you know, Robert, you're saying, you're saying you're nonpartisan, right?
I am. I made a.
No, no, Robert, Robert, let me finish. You're not nonpartisan. You, you were on the nominating committee. You were calling people while you were on the nominating committee, advocating for Mr. Natchez. While you were supposed to be making a decision, you already made a decision. So please, sir, don't tell me you're nonpartisan.
This is personal business. It has nothing to do here in this.
No, no, it does. It does.
No, it does not.
This is the kind of, you know, under the table, behind the back stuff that goes on in this community. And then, you know, you all sit there acting hurt and chagrin. It's nonsense. It really is. So have a good evening. But don't, I'm just not going to be quiet about it anymore. There's not going to be this gentleman's agreement where, you know, I get stabbed in the back constantly and I keep my mouth shut.
Tom, no one's accused you ever of being quiet. You know that.
It's going to happen.
You're showing your shoe colors, Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Robert. Thank you. And Robert, you know, when you start sending emails in the morning about me, make sure you don't send it to people who are friends of me because they send it to me. Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Good, good to know. We could have a real conversation at some point and honest.
We're not going to, you know, Robert, I've had conversations with you and during those conversations, I've said, Robert, if you ever have a question, please call me. Let me know. And you say yes.
And I did. And I had a conversation. Want to extend this? This is, this is not the board of trustees. You're focusing on me. I don't know why. I'm just a citizen. I'm just a resident. I'm here for the best of, of the village.
You're here to protect your political friends.
What about your political friends?
This is wrong. This is wrong, Mayor. This is very.
It's wrong. That's fine. It's wrong.
This is very wrong.
Say that all you want. You know what, Victor? I've been here too long and I've put up with too much in the last few years. There's, there's been no support. You know, there's, there's been.
Again, don't get personal. This is very wrong. Stop.
You know, Kelly.
Stop.
Kelly got accused here.
Stop, Mayor. Stop. You're, it is ridiculous. Stop. Let's finish. This is not personal. We're, you're out of order on yourself.
I'm not out of order. This is. Everybody in the village, everybody in the village sees what happens.
Let's stop this, Mayor.
Everybody in the village sees what happens. I'm sorry.
This is the public's area.
You can't take the truth here.
This is the public's area.
This is the truth.
Oh, you have the truth. That's it.
I'm going to know.
Mayor, stop it.
No.
Stop it.
No. You have people come like Robert and do stuff like this.
Stop it. I have nothing to do with this. Stop.
You never really do anything.
Stop it.
Really good at not having, taking any responsibility with it. Why don't you abstain?
Stop it.
It's what you do well. Reports from the village manager.
Mayor, I have a report I want to read. Last week, I received an email from the chairperson of the tree committee and it highlights staff. and people who are really taking the tree committee and what they believe is important in this village. So it says here, I received this on Tuesday, March eighth. Dear Jerry, I finished the agenda for Thursday's meeting this morning and realized it was laced with gratitude for the initiatives that benefit and protect trees through the Village of Amerenac departments. Jeff Hahn showed me the new tree diapers, dreadful name, that he wants to test for watering new trees. Mark Ferraro worked with Westchester Joint Water Works to install equipment in a way that would protect the roots of an established tree. Dennis Drogen is coming to the meeting to explain the idea of a new hotline for reporting removals that may violate the tree law. An application to clear-cut another property on our Oriente was denied. A floating branch was removed from the overhead wires on Melbourne. We've had author talks. We have tree walks. We have pruning workshops, and we have a tree law, and it's being taken seriously. It is a gigantic advance in the Village of Amerenac culture around our village trees. Thank you, Beverly. I just want to give a quick update on the tree law, Mayor. Since the beginning of February, we've denied the removal of twenty-five trees. So in essence, we saved twenty-five trees. We approved the removal of six very sick or diseased trees, which is eighty-one percent of the requested trees have been saved. And we issued one citation with fines for the removal of three trees without a permit or approval. And so I just want the board to know that the tree law is working, that people are taking it seriously, that the staff is taking it seriously, and that the staff now knows that trees are significant priority in the Village of Amerenac. Other than that, Mayor, I have two to, two items to file for the record. One is the two thousand and two Southeast Consortium Interagency Agreement. And then the other is an agreement that I signed with Whitman Osterman for the TICRT appeal. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Great.
You left out adding three things to the agenda.
The appointments.
Yes, true. I'm gonna go back. Item four M, to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Augie, call a roll.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The item added to the agenda is to appoint Ms. Laura Abadi to the Traffic Commission. Sally will tell her tomorrow the length of her term. I'll make that motion.
Second.
A roll.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes, well, thanks.
Before? Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Item. Item three O, add another item to the agenda. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bless you. Next, this is to add Mr. Timothy O'Connor to the Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Thanks.
Item Q, add another item to the agenda. Any motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Item R, this is to add Ms. Sarah McNano.
Yeah. So moved.
Good.
All, call a roll.
Trustee Young?
Yeah.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, now reports from the clerk treasurer.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Report from the board's attorney.
Nothing from me tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Minutes, commissions, boards, committees, minutes of board trustees, work session, regular meeting, February twenty-eighth. Minutes of the Recreation Parks Committee meeting of January twelfth and February second, twenty-twenty-two. Minutes of Budget Committee of February first, twenty-twenty-two. Minutes of Board of Architecture Review, January fourth, January twentieth, February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Hope everybody has a great St. Patrick's Day. Please head out to the parade on Sunday around this weekend. Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Bye.